Call to order the January 24th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize our mayor pro tem for the ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now in adoption of the agenda. Staff recommends the removal of item 6.2. It's 18 REZ02, the Weston PDD Amendment ONI Track 2A, to allow further opportunity to engage with staff and citizens. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Still moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And I would like to recognize some special guests we have with us in our audience tonight. We are joined by the state champion teams from Cary High School. And I'll ask the men's cross-country and wrestling teams to stand and be recognized for that great accomplishment. It's nice to have champions in our audience. Thank you for being here. We now move to the managers' update, and I'll call on Sean Stigl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to ask Deputy Manager Mike Bajoric to come to the podium.
Yes, he might come up here with a big sigh. He's a person of service. He's been with the town 31 years, and I can't think of anybody with a bigger service heart than Mike Bajoric. And he doesn't like to be recognized. He likes to do the work to help other people. But we only have a few days left with you, so we want to recognize you on this night for everything you've done, just as a small token of all the wonderful things you've done and all the positions you've held. Commending Michael J. Bajoric, Mike is who we're calling, for his devoted service to the town of Cary. Whereas, Mike earned a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from VMI, a master's degree from Central Michigan University, and attended the UNC School of Government's Municipal Administration Public Executive Leadership Academy. And whereas, Mike served his country through active duty in the Air Force from 1980 to 1984, and continued serving in the Air Force Reserves until he retired as the rank of major. And whereas, after 31 years at the town of Cary, Mike is retiring. He started on January 4th, 1998, as the Assistant Public Works Director. He has held other positions in Cary since that time, including Public Works Director, Assistant Town Manager, and Deputy Town Manager. And he also took on the interim roles as the Director of Public Works and Utilities and the Interim Town Manager. And whereas, Mike, responsible for crafting an excellent citizen experience for many of the services that are often only encountered citizens have with the town, has had a consistent focus on citizen service and was the force behind making Cary's reputation and quality of life unlike any other municipality. And whereas, Mike distinguished himself over the years as a leader in emergency operations management, having guided Cary's response through the multiple emergency events, most notably Hurricane Fran and the 2002 ice storm. And whereas, Mike took on a special project that has great meaning to me and our citizens. The abuse of opioids is affecting communities throughout the nation. Cary's commitment to offering solutions to this pressing health crisis and increasing the public's understanding of opioid misuse has been demonstrated by the pilot wastewater monitoring project that generates opioid consumption data by measuring concentrations of the opioid metabolites in sewage. Well, that's a mouthful.
I could say that.
Under Mike's leadership, this project won $100,000 grant from the Bloomberg Foundation. The project included a large component of public engagement for which Mike participated in dozens of media interviews, bringing much-needed attention to this issue. And after this period of public engagement, the number of opioid deaths decreased from 10 in 2016 and 11 in 2017 to just two in 2018. Now, therefore, I, Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, North Carolina, on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, express our appreciation to Mike for his 31 years of faithful service and devotion to enhancing the quality of life for all of Cary's residents. We thank Mike for his vision, his leadership, and we wish him much happiness and continued success in his retirement years proclaimed this 24th day of January 2019. Mike, thank you all.
I think it's really appropriate that Cary High School's champs are here. I appreciate you working that out for me. Mayor, council, just thank you so much. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve you and our citizens of Cary for these 31 years. I think I'm most grateful for the opportunity to work and to have fun with this group of characters behind me. I am so thankful to them for giving me the opportunity to work with them as they created this organization that we have, which I truly think is the best municipal government that we have in the country. And I just truly thank you guys for including me in all the work that you guys have done. Just in concluding, I just thank you again, thank Mayor, for this. And I just will continue to pray that you guys will continue to be blessed, that our staff will be blessed, and that our community will continue to grow. So thank you very much for this time.
Well said. Thank you, Mike. We're gonna miss ya. Okay, we're moving to Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak, please take a seat to the rows on my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing. And that works to your benefit, because public hearing speakers get five minutes instead of three. The three-minute time limit will be enforced. Not be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium, and when the green light turns to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that's the time I'll interrupt you again, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair. And to help us have an efficient Public Speaks Out item, we asked that groups have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of everyone that they're representing to reduce repetitive comments. And also, if you'd like to speak next, I would ask that you stand over there next to the stairway, so that we know that we have another speaker coming, and we're more efficient, and we don't spend time waiting. Public Speaks Out has a one-hour time limit. We want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. So I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please don't applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that might distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would ask that our first speaker approach the podium.
Mr. Mayor, let me comment that I know people showed up and just found out that something's been pulled. I just want them to be assured to know that we're hearing that, just because it's pulled tonight. It does well to speak. I don't want that to...
Okay.
I just want them to be clear.
Good evening. I am Lynn Johnson. I live at 4224 Green Level West Apex. I'm also representing my neighbors Martha and Robert Brinson of 4300 Green Level. They are both here tonight, and I'd like to ask them to stand. Thank you. We are here due to the approval of 18 REZ01 and 18 A01 on January 10th. We are the homeowners in the excluded rectangle. Comments at that meeting led me to believe that a few members still thought we chose not to sell. On May 3, 2018, my remarks to council stated the developer refused to purchase our properties, citing the expense of the road development. Your handout includes his email. Numerous meetings and emails with the staff have occurred. We have clearly expressed our willingness to sell. Kimberly Stevenson of Coldwell Banker Advantage has represented us since January of 2018 and continues in this capacity. Additionally, on November 16th, Tim Allen of Siegel and Associates, a commercial appraiser hired by the town, evaluated both properties. Your approval means we are Wake County. Across the street is Apex. Behind and beside us is Cary. My property will have what has been likened to a Cary Parkway dead ending and lining up with my deck or possibly my master bedroom. Staff tells me this truncated road at my property line in no way harms my property value. Yet, would any of you purchase a home with that feature? The approved project includes two entrances, one on each side of our homes from Green Level, both with additional lanes. Our understanding is the road in front of our homes shall not be widened. This will be an interesting traffic conundrum with the new lanes from this project, and yet only the existing lane in front of us and the dead end behind me. Just like the developer did, we are asking council for relief and help. The staff has ideas, appraisals, and now project approval. I trust that each of you and the staff will now continue working on these challenging traffic needs, and I look forward to your equitable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out. Anyone else for Public... Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? We're coming to public hearings very shortly. Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and move to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, for people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to read our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, we have firefighter's relief fund appointment, authority to dispose vehicles, amendments to delegation of authority, bid award for the 2019 water main replacement project, 18 REZ21, 6808 Good Hope Church Road, consistency statement, and rezoning case. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes for their comments. Our first public hearing is the Go Cary Services Changes. Transit Administrator Kelly Blasey will present the item, and council may take action.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It is an exciting time for transit in Cary, and I'm excited to be here tonight to provide an update on Go Cary services and the Wake County Transit Plan. The item before you tonight details proposed service changes to Go Cary's fixed route system as recommended by the Wake Transit Bus Plan. This is a great thing for our community, as these changes will allow us to provide better transit service to more people by adding new routes, improving on-time performance, and simplifying maps and schedules. Go Cary currently operates six bus routes, four of which originate at the Cary Depot, and two that form the Maynard Loop. As part of the Wake Transit Bus Plan, transit staff conducted a comprehensive operations analysis, or COA, last fall. The COA looked at things like population and employment density, development and travel patterns, and existing public transit services in Cary, Apex, and Morrisville. The end result is a series of proposed service changes that work together to take our system from the map that you see on the left to the more efficient, wider-reaching system that you see in the map on the right. In order to maintain our eligibility for Wake Transit funding, the town is obligated to maintain service standards that indicate operational efficiency and fiscal responsibility. In order to improve our performance in these areas and to continue receiving funding, the COA recommends the following service expansions and modifications. A new Route 7 will serve Weston Parkway, Chapel Hill Road, Park West Village, Cary Parkway, and James Jackson Avenue. In conjunction with this increase in service, Route 3 will be streamlined to serve Harrison Avenue only, connecting to Route 7 at Harrison Square. Route 6 will provide more direct service from downtown Cary to Cary Town Center with new service along Walnut Street. By FY21, this route will also extend to the state fairgrounds, where it will connect to a Go Raleigh Route, offering high-frequency service into downtown Raleigh. Routes 4 and 5 will only see minor changes. The routes will be straightened to improve reliability and address safety concerns along High House and Kildare Farm Roads. Route 4 will use on-street stops to serve Maynard Crossing and Highway 55, rather than entering into the shopping centers in those locations. It will also serve the Senior Center on the inbound stop only. Route 5 will serve a shared stop with Go Triangle on Tryon Road, instead of entering the Walmart Shopping Center at Crescent Commons. We also currently operate a Rush Hour Express Route on Kildare Farm Road, but since this duplicates service already provided by Route 5, it will be discontinued due to low ridership. The Maynard Loop, while labeled Routes 1 and 2 on the schedule, is essentially one route with buses traveling in opposite directions every hour. This loop will be reconfigured into a single Route 1, which will look different, but will provide service to more people. The new Route 1 will operate every 30 minutes and will connect with the rest of the system at the Cary Depot. This route will also provide more direct service between Cary Town Center, Crossroads Plaza, and other Go Cary routes. Go Cary is also proposed to be the service provider for an express route serving Holly Springs and Apex during peak travel times Monday through Friday. This route is scheduled to begin service in FY20. In addition to the service changes proposed for later this spring, we are contemplating a Western Wake micro-transit pilot, proposed to begin in FY21. Micro Transit is an on-demand service that provides flexible travel options using nodes or connection points. Riders request pickups using an app similar to that of Uber or Lyft. The pilot program will serve nodes located at major destinations in Western Cary, such as shopping or employment centers, medical offices, and residential developments, as well as providing connections to other Go Cary routes. This will allow us to provide service to multiple locations in Western Cary, which will then help us determine the best alignments for future fixed route service. We will continue to update you as this project moves into the planning phase. Go Cary strongly encourages public participation and comments on proposed service changes. The public was notified of the proposed changes and associated public meetings and comment periods through multiple sources, including postings on buses and at affected bus stops. We hosted three public meetings in October to inform the public about the proposed changes being considered and to gather comments to help make final decisions. Public comment periods were open from October 8th through November 2nd, and from December 20th through January 15th. In total, 51 comments were received. We made several modifications based on these comments. In many cases, we helped people identify alternate stops or routes for their daily travel, and in some cases, we identified the need for additional sidewalk connections. For example, additional sidewalk is needed along a portion of Norwell Boulevard to provide access to the new Route 7. There were also requests to expand evening service to allow for later connections at the Cary Depot, which we are now including in our proposed changes. This means that people leaving Cary Town Center after it closes will still have the option to make a final connection at the depot. The proposed service expansion and changes to existing service are budget-neutral to the town. Route 7 and the Holly Springs Express Service are fully funded through the Wake County Transit Plan, and all service modifications to current service are covered by the existing budget. New bus stops for the expanded and modified routes will be fully funded through Wake Transit as well. We will seek grant funding for the micro-transit pilot project contemplated for FY21. In accordance with federal requirements and in addition to the comprehensive public outreach that has occurred to date, a public hearing is required before council approval of any significant service changes. Following the public hearing, I will be available to answer questions. It is the recommendation of staff that council approve the Go Cary service changes as proposed. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing for the Go Cary service changes, and we're gonna recognize our speaker that's seated over here first. Take your time. You're good.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kristi Wilkerson. I represent 10 other people in my community that take fixed route. And we, and some of us take the... The fixed route to Maynard. Some of us go to the gym. And we need that, we need that stop. Because we need production... Pedestrian crossings to help us get across. Because I take my chair to the gym, and we also need the mall to stay. Because some of us take the bus and get back home by that way. So, and I live at Green Level Apartments on High House with 10 other people. And we take, we take that bus and get around. And if we don't have that stop, we can't, it's hard for us to get, it's hard for us to get across the streets to get the bus. And it's affordable to take the fixed route.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is John Lamp, and I also am in that same complex, right behind 55 and High House. I have actually been told that the stop that is proposed is gonna be right beside the CVS. And so that actually is somewhat gonna be easier, but what probably needs to happen is the sidewalks need to be able to accommodate the wheelchairs. We have, you know, people that take the bus down there, and so myself and the woman who just spoke, both, we both have mobility issues. So, you know, this is something that, you know, I take to work and can get to work easily, because the stop that is right by my work is on the public side, so I can actually, or on the outside of Cary Town Center. So that part will work for me. But getting back, I have to cross back from my work to Maynard, to the mall side to get the bus back. I know there's a stop over on, right there in front of Wells Fargo, but that stop, if it's raining, if it's, you know, bad weather, we are gonna have one tough time trying to keep ourselves dry. And so this is, you know, I would like to see maybe some modifications to the stops, maybe put in better awnings or something to protect us from, you know, the weather elements and stuff. So that was what I would like to see. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamp. Next speaker, please.
As you can tell, it's my first time doing this.
My name is Rosio Anderson.
Thank you.
And I'm here on behalf of my mom, Fatima Falconi. She's not an English speaker. And I just wanted to talk to you about the need for certain stops to not be eliminated. Route 1 comes into Weatherstone Apartments, which is a senior community, and a lot of residents utilize the system, and it may not be at the busiest times, and it may not be consistent on a daily basis, but they go out to the pharmacy to get their medicines, they go for grocery shopping. And somebody had mentioned just even going to the mall is an activity for them. And to hear that that's going to be eliminated because it doesn't equal two dollar signs, I think it's hurtful to the community. We talk about social determinants of health and how this affect the well-being of a person. And we're talking about senior citizens that are seeking outlets to still be contributors to the community. But if we take that away, where transportation is one thing, it's going to be a lack of access to the medical care that they may now have access to, medications, fresh food. Because if you talk about eliminating that stop, family members, and they have to plan ahead, which means a lot of frozen foods and canned food to last them, and I don't think that's the way we want our senior citizens to live. So I strongly encourage the plan to be revised. Yes, the, the comment timeframes were open to, for the senior citizens and for other members of the community to come together and contribute those comments, but they were not available in English and Spanish or in any other language that may be of benefit to our community. We are not only an English and Spanish community, we have a very diverse population, and I think that we need to respond to that as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lamp, Anderson, sorry. Next speaker, please.
My name is Bee Vanny. I live at 200 Weather Ridge Lane, which is the Weatherstone Springs Senior Apartments on the Maynard 1 and 2 Route. Right now, we have a bus coming right in front of our building, and the changes will force anyone that is able to walk a half a mile, it will impair them a lot, going clear up to High House or down to James Jackson. While the majority of us are not as able as I am, there are people that are independent and in wheelchairs that want to continue riding the bus independently of door-to-door. Conversely, when people use door-to-door, it comes with a much higher price, and many people are unable to afford that higher price, therefore, they want to maintain their independence. I wrote an email to Kevin Wirick when I heard about this, and so I would like to read these comments so that they're part of this public hearing. "I am concerned about the changes to Maynard Route 1 and 2 since it will impact the 55 and over community living at Weatherstone Springs Senior Apartments at 200 Weather Ridge Lane in Cary. Without continuing the service now available, the residents will not be able to access the bus service since many cannot walk even short distances to catch a bus, and they will be totally dependent on door-to-door service if they qualify. Those of us who are able to walk distances will not necessarily be affected in the same way, however, there is greater risk of life due to crossings, crossing a very busy street, Maynard, without pedestrian walkways, without pedestrian traffic signals, or regular traffic lights. I myself am a very rigorous walker, and you don't know how many close calls I've been hitting, being hit with the walk sign in my favor. The traffic on Maynard Road does not stop for pedestrians, even at the traffic signals up the street a half a mile, which is where Kroger once was. Furthermore, there is a greater risk of illness by walking in the cold, rainy and occasionally snowy weather such as increased colds, flu, and pneumonia, which affects seniors more detrimentally than a younger population." Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Vanny. Next speaker, please.
My name is Lynn Neiman, and I'm a go-everywhere rider. And I also have similar concerns about these changes, particularly like eliminating these stops that actually go into the shopping complexes, again, for us seniors that have heart trouble getting around, people that have mobility issues, even younger people, young kids. That means having to walk from busy highways across parking lots and such to get into those places, which again is, gets into safety issues, especially in bad weather. And, you know, they say the alternative is use the door-to-door, but for the younger folks, that's not available. And for us older folks, there's a big difference between a dollar fifty for a day pass that I can make multiple trips, and depending on which tier you're in, six dollars to eight dollars per trip to go out doing your shopping or whatever. And part of what I'm looking at is, these other systems apparently are why they're making the change. I mean, you know, the transit plan there says they're moving the stops to do that. And I always looked at GoCary doing that as a plus compared to the other systems, and I really hate to see that going away. The other thing as far as the ridership numbers, I think part of the problem is, aside from this new Route 7, the buses don't go to all the places people want to go. And case in point, Cary Parkway, which is that handout, year after year on the surveys, one of the big things people wanted was the Cary Parkway route. They'd go look at it, say the metrics don't support it, rinse and repeat the next year. What I never heard asked is where you want to go on Cary Parkway? And if you ask those questions, what you'll find is there's basically six locations that are on that sheet where mainly people want to go. And four of those six are primarily medical facilities or complexes of doctors and stuff. And, but they never say, is there another way to do this besides the big loop? And just as a throw-it-out, they're suggesting, I propose an alternate to that, which gets those four primary medical stops plus a few others that people might like. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Neiman. Next speaker for this public hearing.
Joe Malazzo, I live at 307 Tibbetts Rock Drive in Cary. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak about the proposed GoCary changes. Also, I want to take the time to thank Kelly and Kevin and all the members of the team that have been very responsive in providing information. The comprehensive operational analysis was needed. Long time coming. I think it's very good. It's an opportunity to marry the Youth Go Pass, which started this, this summer. My son Joey is here. He's just turned thirteen. He was very excited, that summer, summer I should say, he's very excited to have that. As a parent, I'm just as excited for different reasons. It creates independence for youth. It creates an opportunity to see their community and see more about what's here. I do want to let you know that we are going to be losing the only bus route that touches our subdivision, and we couldn't be happier. You might say, why is that? Well, because this is better for the community as a whole, the work that's being done for us. So we're going to actually have to travel farther. We're going to have to travel, we're going to have to walk a further distance to get to a GoCary route, and we know that. But we still think for the community as a whole, this is better. So what's, one thing that we learned, we made some comments, my son did, my neighbors across the street all, all did, they, our neighbors across the street even use it to go to school every day for the Montessori school in downtown. So this is a, not just a, hey, let's try the bus one day, they use it every day. But our understanding is, and you heard that earlier from Kelly, that Norwell will have some additional sidewalks on it, so while the path will be longer, it'll be a longer distance, they'll still be able to access the bus. And then Route 7, which is the new route, will become thirty-minute frequency sooner, so it'll be similar to what the bus route that we would, we are losing. So we are the, the piece of the streamlining that's, that's needed for number three. That will happen. We took the bus here today, and frankly, the bus was late arriving, and so for a number of reasons, probably because of the traffic. So the streamlining is necessary. The operational analysis was necessary. The changes were necessary, and it's going to make it better for the system as a whole. Quite frankly, I will say that there are many residents in this community that do not appreciate the service that exists and is about to exist. And that's just, and that's just everybody's busy. It's not blaming, it's just everyone's busy. A lot of folks may not realize that Routes 3, excuse me, Routes 4 is actually Route, I think it's 6 as well, and 3 and 5 are the same, and 7 will become 1, that you don't even have to switch routes, which buses. When you go downtown, you can stay on the same bus after a pause and continue, and so that is another benefit. So a lot of our neighbors are excited, and they're seeing what the different places they're going to be able to get to, and we appreciate the time to do that. So applaud the town for looking at this. Applaud, of course, Wake County for putting together the great services that we have and are going to have over time for our growing community. And there are probably many residents who are not here tonight, who are not able to speak. In fact, there are many folks who are not able to speak here because they don't know about the service that exists, but they're going to benefit tremendously from these changes, and so we applaud that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malazzo.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? I'm sorry.
Didn't have time to type up my notes, so bear with me, please. Mayor and Council members, good evening. I'm Charlotte Armstrong, and I live at Highland Village, which is, as you well know, affordable senior living. And I'm in one of the largest complexes out there. We have the three buildings for seniors. I don't represent apartment management or anything like that, it's just that I have been there for the fourteen years that it's been opened, and I worked very closely with Ray Boylston, who was the previous Transit Services Administrator. And I'm very eager in being sure that those that are in a position to make decisions about GoCary will hear from someone like myself who has been on the bus and who has heard and seen a lot of things that are going on. I am absolutely floored by what Ms. Blasey has done. It's obvious that she is extremely well-educated and capable of producing the data that you need to make a proper decision for GoCary. I don't cross her at all on that, but I do have several things that are more on the personal level that I really feel need to be considered by both her and by council. We have, there are a number of problems, but I think that, my opinion is, is that the town of Cary is causing a lot of the problems, and GoCary is causing a lot of the problems. And I think if some of those things that I'd like to speak about as quickly as I can, I'd like y'all for it to consider it anyway. Okay, here we go. Everybody knows that there's massive congestion at the Cary Depot from cars, from Amtrak, from CSX, from everything. Right now, we've got six buses that can be lined up there, three one direction, three the other direction. And that's the 4-6, the 1-3, and if she gets this one in, I think the 7-1, I'm not really sure where all these transfer points are going to be, but I think that they're going to be there, too. And then we have the GoRaleigh buses, the 300, the 301, and during parts of the day, it's my understanding that these buses are there, lined up every thirty minutes. We got problems. If the Maynard loops are stopped, number one, all the people who are using those loops to get to work, your Walmart employees, your Taco Bell employees, a lot of people who use it will no longer have that option, and that's an employment issue. Those buses seem to be packed early in the morning when these people are trying to get to work. I don't know that they have been surveyed, and I think that is a very good thing that needs to be done. Go to the bus drivers and get them to anonymously put in their two cents worth. Go, and have Town of Cary do that. Just an anonymous survey and let them put it in because they're the ones that have to deal with the problems, come to work every day and have to deal with the problems, hear the people complaining about the problems, and then get blamed, from what I've heard, by the MV Management Corporation for which they're hired, that, that they're not staying on schedule. We all know what happens in Cary and downtown. You can't get, when you got three buses going this way and three buses going this way at the Cary Depot, and one of those buses is being held over, you can't get out of your queue. So it holds up three buses, Raleigh buses, Cary buses, okay? Then you've got the problem of people coming out of the buses and trying to get to the transfer buses. They're going between buses, they're going, when buses are trying to pull out, they're going in front of buses. There is no monitoring system there. It is complete and total chaos and very unsafe. How does this affect the routes? I think that if we get some of that congestion in downtown reorganized by having, hopefully, an MV Transportation designated people down there to keep the, the cross traffic, the through traffic out of the Cary Depot.
Ms. Armstrong.
Oh, okay.
I know you have a lot to say. Could you finish your thought and then?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. If you could get MV Transportation or off-duty Cary Police Department or Town of Cary employee or something out there to enforce no through traffic, I really think that would help, number one. Number two, it's on the same line, may I?
Please be brief.
I will. I think you need to make two more entrances into the Cary Depot, one from North Harrison, one from North Academy, and cut off the front part of the Cary Depot from any car traffic, any taxi cabs, any drop-offs. Put them over there on the other side where Amtrak has a good entrance to their building, I think it's Platform A. Make those entrances there, right between their track shelters and their parking lot, and have them brought in there.
I'm going to have to stop you now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your comments, though. Next speaker for the public hearing? Anyone else for the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll be the first to admit that I don't have a lot of knowledge about the bus routes. I don't have a lot of knowledge of how they operate, yet I'm sitting here having to make a decision on that, which I don't think is a decision on that, which I don't think is fair. Personally, I think we have a little work to do unless there is a time issue, and my preference would be to table this.
I think that would be a great idea.
Okay. Maybe we can work on some of these issues. I understand, and we've heard from both sides, the improvements are going to really help, but we still have some issues, some very passionate and powerful statements made. I mean, it really touched me, so I would like to see if we can make some improvements in those areas and help these people that desperately depend on these routes and these stops and these crossings and everything else we heard about tonight. So, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think Mayor, Cary has a long tradition of not just listening to its residents, but allowing the residents to help us make better decisions. And sometimes, you need the formal public hearing process to kind of complete that cycle, and I think that's what we're seeing here tonight. And so, as a town manager, I would find it very beneficial and appreciate the opportunity to engage with them further, follow up on some of their suggestions and comments, and see how we can continue to maximize the greatest good for the greatest number of people. I'm not saying we can solve all the problems, but I'm confident that we can more of them if we're given a little bit more time.
And so, if my colleagues table this, who would be a good contact? Is it Ms. Blasey? Are you the contact?
Yes.
Okay. And so, I would urge all of our speakers to contact Ms. Blasey. Let her compile all this information, and they can make decisions on what needs to change or what we can do to help you out. So, having said all that, I'll open up to my colleagues and see what they want to do and what they want to say.
Well, I just have a couple of comments. One is, I sent an email to Ms. Blasey about, we had talked at the last work session that we had the Go Cary discussion about making sure that we had safe access to senior affordable housing. And at that time, Willow Creek had opened, and it's, and we had been told at that time that we would be looking for an expansion to Willow Creek as one of the senior affordable housing. So, I'd like to ensure that as you relook at everything, that we include all of the senior affordable housing and not just close to their, to them, but through a safe route. All right? So, making sure that we do an onsite visit to make sure that, as the gentleman said, make sure that there's accessibility for wheelchairs, that before we make any changes like that, that we've done an actual onsite walk and make sure that there's sidewalks before we make any of those changes. The other thing, just as an idea, as you all go back and start to consider what more information you need, I would love it if you would include the technology organization. One of the Internet of Technology opportunities is to monitor this with technology. They saw all kinds of transportation solutions at their latest events. More data should also help make better decisions, along with the great feedback that we got from the citizens. So, I'd like, those are my two thoughts.
Other comments?
Questions regarding the proposed pilot program, on-demand service, that you stated would be similar to Uber and Lyft? If Uber and Lyft are already providing these services, why do we feel the need that we should also do the same?
The services will be provided through connection nodes, specific nodes, that will provide access to the Go Cary routes, most likely at a lower cost than Uber and Lyft. It is a service that would be provided through the existing Go Cary system, so it would use Go Cary vehicles and Go Cary drivers as part of an extension to fixed route service, but it wouldn't operate like a traditional fixed route. It would be on-demand.
Okay, and this would be out in the Western Cary area, was that correct?
Yes.
And here we are talking about taking away an existing fixed route from folks who obviously need it. I guess my question would be, if we're taking that route or reducing the service, why then wouldn't we pilot this in that area so that those people who we've been serving for years still have service?
I think it's important to note that this isn't a service reduction for the existing service. We'll actually be providing additional service, and we can certainly look at including nodes in those areas. We focused on Western Cary as part of the micro-transit pilot because Western Cary isn't currently part of the Wake Transit Plan, and we wanted to make sure that we were looking at that area in the early years before the Wake Transit Plan is reevaluated, to see if there's an opportunity for us to provide some service there. And because it hasn't been studied yet, we don't know the best alignments for that area where we can reach the most people and provide the best service. So, this is a way for us to kind of test out that area and figure out where is the most demand, where can we provide the best service to people, and gather that data that was mentioned so that as we move forward through the years of the plan, we can develop the best fixed route service to then serve that area.
Okay. I heard quite a few comments today that also weren't necessarily Go Cary-specific, but more so sidewalk-specific or pedestrian crossing-specific so that they could actually get to the bus stop, so.
And if I may, we do have a very robust bus stop improvement plan that we're actually in the process of implementing now. We're going through the procurement phase for that, and so, we have funding through Wake Transit every year of the plan, and we've developed a complete inventory of all existing bus stops and a prioritization framework for those so that every year, we will be putting money into the capital infrastructure of the system to improve those bus stops with the main priority being ADA accessibility and safety.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And then, lastly, I heard speaker referred to the situation at the downtown depot as complete and total chaos. I've actually been there numerous times and seen the buses come in and stuff, and I don't know that I would agree that it's complete and total chaos, but just wanted to let folks know that we're currently in the middle of doing a multimodal transit study that, in the future, may help solve a lot of those issues, so.
Thank you.
It is something that the town's aware of, something we're working on, and something that we hope one day in the near future, we can solve some of those issues, so that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Other comments?
Well, I like the comments I've already heard. I will say, thank you so much for everybody who came out to speak because it's very helpful for us to hear from the riders of the system. And I'm glad that we're able to table it because I think that's the right decision to do in this case. Some of the tweaks that have been made for efficiencies seem really great on paper, but when you look at the lives impacted, you have to reconsider that and put that personal touch on it. So, I'm glad that we're going to go back and do that, and I'm really glad that you have a prioritization for the shelters that we're going to be putting in. And I know you talked about ADA, but I'd also encourage us to prioritize those that are near the senior citizen communities. We talked about cold weather, Ms. Vane, you talked about cold weather, but it's also extreme heat that can be dangerous to people. So, I'd really like us to prioritize that and those stops that we know people are using for employment. And then, finally, I think that there's a lot of value in taking this feedback from the riders. I think Mr. Niemann's comments about going to some of these places on Cary Parkway, I think that's a very provocative point to be made because, you know, we don't, we talk about how valuable the YMCA is to our community, for the health of our community, but we don't have a bus route that's going there, and so, some of these doctor's offices. I just think it's really worth us investigating, and it may not be something we can achieve in the near, near future, but let's start looking at it and prioritizing that. And I'm very excited about your node thing for Western Cary. Thank you very much for doing that because I think that also is really good. I would just ask that we, like, just advertise this like mad, because as Mr. Malaza pointed out, a lot of people just don't know about it. And so, if we're going to do that kind of pilot, let's make sure everybody really understands it, and I'd hope that that node would also go to the high schools. I know not during the time that the kids get out of school, but if you could, you know, allow times, like, maybe starting 45 minutes after school gets out, because I think a lot of our high schoolers would appreciate the service to get to employment. So, I'd like us to kind of consider that in that node system. So, anyway, thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for everybody who come, who came out to speak. I really found your comments worthwhile.
Other comments?
Yeah, I think on the feedback, it's great to get the feedback, and whether it's on the buses or through the buses, and the comments about the language barrier, we certainly would have the capability to put out flyers or information in other languages, and especially with the Hispanic community. And I, you know, welcome that thing, Nos Gustos de los Hispanicos, and it's important to us that we have the opportunity to reach out to the communities that live here within those languages, and the flyers are certainly an easy way to do it without having to provide translators. If there's flyers about public hearings, we certainly have enough staff, whether it's police or others, we have enough staff that are bilingual, trilingual, that can come help, and that's certainly important.
And we actually employ a translation service, and we did provide advertisements and information in Spanish for all of this as well.
Okay, and on the buses as well, and then?
On the buses and at all of the stop locations.
And the, and these feedback sessions, and we need to make them feel like it's, we want to.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, that's great. Thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Smith?
It's all been said. But, no, I think we have a little bit of a conundrum where we have, you know, we try to apply the efficiencies and we try to gain the more of the ridership, just as Joe had mentioned when he spoke. But I think what makes Cary special is that we try not to, we don't let data and statistics get in the way of trying to help all of those in Cary, and I just echo what all of you have said. Appreciate you coming out tonight and being part of this. And, you know, sometimes it isn't always the most cost-effective, and I know we always have to try to strike that balance of where we invest tax dollars, but I do hope as we look at this over the next couple weeks that we really consider those senior communities and those that need this service, because frankly, they were the first and the loyal ones to public transit, you know? And we're not going to throw them under the bus. So, you know, I think, I think we, as a community, are compassionate, and I'd like to think that we kind of work some of those things out.
In spite of your jokes.
In spite of my jokes.
No, that's actually a pretty good one.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Blasey, I want to thank you. I know you've got a million points of data, and you and your staff have worked real hard to get to this point, and I want you to know that I have confidence that you're going to come back and you're going to take all of this, and you're going to come back with a recommendation to make a lot of people happy. So, I just wanted you to know that because you must feel like you're taking arrows nonstop.
Oh, no, no, that's quite all right. We want to provide the best service for as many people as we can. That is our ultimate goal. So, I appreciate the feedback.
Very good. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to table.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This is tabled indefinitely unless I hear otherwise.
To an uncertain date, yeah.
To an uncertain date. And the speakers, I know you're very passionate, and we really thank you for being here. Please stay in contact with Ms. Blasey, and if you can't get into contact with her, just contact me. I'm on the website. We all are. If you have questions, let us know, and we'll be in contact with, we'll respond to you, I promise. So, thanks again for being here. Okay, we're going to move to our next public hearing. It's item 5.4, 17 REZ 13, Weldon Ridge PDD Amendment. And Ms. Dry will introduce this item. We're not going to make a decision on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to send it to the Planning and Zoning Board, which is a group of citizens that we've appointed to review and make a recommendation back to council, and we'll eventually see this in a few months. So, having said all that, I'll recognize Ms. Dry at this time.
Good evening, council. This is a request to amend the Weldon Ridge Plan Development District. This is the second public hearing for this case. The first public hearing was presented over a year ago in December of 2017. Since that time, the applicant has made several revisions to the application, including reducing the proposed school size and revising the traffic study. And so, because of the changes to the application, this case is restarting at the beginning with an initial public hearing tonight. As you may remember from the public hearing last year, the site's within the Weldon Ridge PDD, just west of the Chatham County line and next to the American Tobacco Trail. Current uses allowed on the site include a school, church, preschool, daycare uses, as well as residential uses. The applicant is seeking to move the location of the school and increase the number of residential lots, all within the boundaries of the existing site. The site's divided into two tracks, S1 and SF6. The applicant's seeking to divide the S1 tract, which is the school and church tract, into two tracks, S1A and S1B, and shift the location to front Yates Store Road. The residential tract, which is SF6, would shift to the north adjacent to the American Tobacco Trail and increase the number of units from 46 to 104. So, what has changed since 2017, when this case was originally presented to the town council? The applicant has reduced the number of students for the proposed school from 2,200 to 1,300 students max. The proposed school will still be a K through 12 school. The traffic study was revised accordingly, and in 2018, there were also changes to the state law regarding road improvements for schools. So, I'd like to take a moment to review the state legislation changes, starting with state legislation before 2017. So, at that time, schools were required to build frontage and access improvements. If there was a rezoning case, conditions could be offered for off-site road improvements, and municipalities could consider the level of service for roads as a basis for denying a rezoning request. In 2017, state legislation was passed with the changes shown here in yellow. So, schools were still required to build frontage and access improvements, but now the towns and/or DOT are required to pay for the frontage and access improvements. If there was a rezoning request, conditions could still be offered for road improvements, and councils across the state could still consider level of service for roads as a basis for denying a rezoning request. In 2018, state law was further revised with the changes shown here in yellow. Now, there are limitations placed around conditioning approval of schools, and level of service cannot be a basis for denying a rezoning when a school's involved. And so, therefore, with this case, we do not have any conditions for off-site road improvements, and council cannot consider the level of service for denying the rezoning for this case. Because the site is located in Chatham County, the rezoning is evaluated using guidance from the Imagine Cary Community Plan and also the Chatham Cary Joint Land Use Plan. There was a comprehensive plan amendment associated with the site for the Joint Chatham-Cary Land Use Plan, which was approved by the town and Chatham County in August of 2017. A preliminary analysis notes that the uses align with the locations as shown on that recently-approved Joint Land Use Plan Amendment. The residential use proposed is also a similar housing type and lot size to other units in the area. The revised traffic study was completed in August of 2018. It has been reviewed by the town and NC DOT, and the study evaluated 12 intersections within one mile of the site boundary. And this study has identified deficiencies at the intersection shown here in green. The report also identified improvements at site driveways for internal road intersections within the site. And in comparison with the results from the previous study, this development program would generate 63% fewer AM peak hour trips and 55% fewer PM peak hour trips. The improvements for the site will be determined at the time of plan review. The study also looked at carpool lanes. To evaluate and determine the carpool lane length, school driveways are measured to ensure adequate queuing length to keep school traffic from interrupting nearby roads. The length of the carpool lanes for schools are determined by NC DOT based on a predictive queuing model. This rezoning proposal provides approximately 3,000 feet of carpool lane length for the middle and high school and 1,400 feet of carpool lane length for the K through 5 school, for a total of 4,400 feet. NC DOT's Municipal School Transportation Assistance Group has reviewed the proposal and has indicated that the carpool lengths proposed are adequate. Staff also notes that the carpool lane length of 4,400 feet here is based on the previous application before the student count was reduced to 1,300. The applicant has chosen not to reduce the carpool lane length, even though the number of students has been reduced. The applicant has proposed zoning conditions committing to this amount with a total of 4,482. 4,482 linear feet of stacking, as well as 30-minute stacker start times for the school openings. In addition to the zoning process, there will be opportunities for check-in and enforcement, including NC DOT's driveway permit process and the town's requirement for a traffic management plan, which will be developed and approved as part of the development We've also heard requests from council, as well as from citizens regarding how the carpool lane lengths compare to other schools in the area. This chart shows a few examples of other schools in the triangle and their carpool lane lengths. You can see the proposed school at the bottom of the chart, which is proposing 1,300 students maximum and 4,482 linear feet of carpool lane. This rezoning had a neighborhood meeting, which was originally held in October of 2017. The applicant has held two follow-up neighborhood meetings, as well as multiple other meetings with area residents. The most recent neighborhood meeting was in December of 2018, where the applicant shared the current proposed application. For the public hearing, properties within 800 feet of the site were notified, as well as property posting on the site and legal ads posted on the town's website. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments, and following that and the public hearing, staff's available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
This was a little bit easier on the car ride over. So, my name is Jacob Anderson. I'm going to try to keep it a little factual and get out of here. I actually represent the owners, and own a small consulting firm called Alliance Group of North Carolina. Fortunately, you'll probably see me more soon, so maybe this is a good exercise on a very difficult site. So, very much a privilege to be in front of you guys. I very much respect the town of Cary and all that it affords me. Even the last presentation is a good example of why you guys are special. So, I was given this opportunity to sell this property on behalf of the owners, and originally, we participated with a developer who we were hoping would take it in the right direction, and we soon found that that was not the case. So after maybe a year and a half of tug-of-war, we were able to sort of pull back and make some different decisions. At the time, we were unaware of maybe what options we might have, but we knew that some changes needed to be made before you guys were to vote on the last application. So, with some direction of staff, we made some changes. I called a few of you council members and felt that probably the last application would not make it very far. So here we are. I'm a bit nervous, so please bear with me. The one thing that we noticed from day one was the communication was just not there from the neighbors. Direction from staff is that the prior application, an applicant probably just wasn't communicating as much as staff would like, being maybe as responsive, and that was definitely direction from the neighbors. So coming into this project, or at least taking it back over, Glenda Topina, who's obviously traveling this evening and making me do this, she and I made it a point that we were going to overly communicate. I think we have done a reasonable job of that. I think there's more to continue to do. But we have, we have tried to do our best, especially with staff and with the neighbors. There are a few of you that I need to be in front of and explain our side and what we feel like we would like to do here, and that time will come. So, first and foremost, communication with staff, especially transportation, as you'll hear later in this evening as the public speaks, transportation is the major concern. So from day one, Deborah Grandin and Katie Dry kind of threw Prietham and David Spencer in a room and said, "Y'all figure it out," or "This kind of goes nowhere." So I think over time, we have figured that out. I think we've made a really great effort of doing what NC DOT and what the town of Cary would require. As Katie mentioned, there's the legislation changes, so not only do we have, you know, the responsibility of making neighbors happy, now we've got changes to the legislation. Just added a little bit of uncertainty to the process that we needed to work out with staff prior to getting in front of you. So this has been behind the scenes for six or eight months. So with that said, we feel like we've made a good effort with staff. We have, we have maintained a great relationship as well with the neighbors. I feel like we started off in a hole, but quite frankly, I was thinking on the way over here how we may hear differently tonight, but I think they've been very respectful of us, and we've been very respectful of them. I have provided a little bit of a cheat sheet of at least the current zoning, the prior proposal, as well as our current proposal, so that you can see a little bit of the changes or lack thereof. As you're all aware, we were fortunate enough to team up with a school that probably with the neighbors gives a little bit more credibility. That does help. We've also been told, very directed by council as well as staff, that you can't vote on that. We understand that, but we also understand that it does help ease some tension. We heard that day one from the neighbors, so I think there's some positive there. Will we ever make them completely happy? Probably not, but we're doing all the communicating we can to do so. With that said, I have provided the cheat sheet, and then I provided a little bit of just a stacking comparison. Ms. Robinson, early on in the process, asked me to compare three schools, which were St. Michael's, Cary Christian, as well as Science and Math, Triangle Science and Math, and they're a good comparison. I feel like we exceed each of those, and as the state law continues to evolve for schools, I feel like it continues to get better for applications such as us. So I think maybe some of the angst that the current neighbors have will start to alleviate once they realize the laws have changed and schools are getting better. Unfortunately, you see schools today that were approved, you know, 10 to 15 years ago, and you don't have much faith in the system, but I think the things have changed to make it better. So, trying to think of anything else that might be very important. As it relates to some of the comparison schools, Triangle Science and Math, I feel like is a good example of maybe the history of schools and what not to do. It's a great school, there's a lot of good students that come out of there, but the stacking next to it probably tends to be a little bit of a burdensome in that neighborhood. We exceed that greatly. So, site-specific, we have about 26 acres for a school, and we have about 34 acres for residential. We, the school currently is probably on about 12 to 13 acres, so we probably have about another eight to 10 usable acres for maybe improvements. Get into this process with Prietham and Jerry Jensen and others, and figure out through the tenure, you know, build out that there are improvements that need to be made. I think we have additional land and opportunity to do so. So with that said, we've also, on that additional land, we've reached out to Parks and Rec, the YMCA's, other civic uses, and just trying to figure out maybe other opportunities to do with that property, so that we can maybe build a little bit of sense of community there. Obviously, everyone knows that the church is excited and maybe looking forward to moving forward with planning on their side as well, so they've reached out to us to try and, you know, collaborate together. So with that said, is there any questions?
We may have some later, not now.
Perfect. Appreciate you.
Thank you. So now's the time for a public hearing, 17 REZ 13, Weldon Ridge PDD Amendment, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Left mic. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem. Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Mischa Locklear. I am a Cary Park resident, NC native, lived in the West Cary area for the past 15 years, and also had the pleasure of watching it grow in that duration of time. I would like to thank town staff and council for the opportunity to speak this evening, as I know that this particular case was previously scheduled to go directly to planning and zoning. So I extend a special thanks to Ms. Katie Dry, who was a clear asset to the town and should be commended in this process. She's been very helpful. Since the last public hearing in December of 2017, myself and a core group of dedicated citizens aligned to follow, study, and discuss the details of the applicant's proposals. As you know, when you gather numerous individuals together, not everybody can agree on all points, but the common denominator among us is the determination to positively influence this process and work in step with town staff to ensure safety and community benefit remain top of mind. For maximum efficiency and effectiveness, we've assembled five core speakers this evening, including myself, to convey community concerns, as well as personal positions on the issues at hand. And I would like to publicly acknowledge and thank these speakers, as well as the countless West Cary Neighborhood Coalition group members who've participated in neighborhood meetings, teleconferences, studied the TAR inside and out, conducted community surveys, school bus counts, interviews with realtors, local businesses, and emergency management personnel, as well as meetings with town staff over the past year. So this evening, mayor and council members, we are not speakers who are here on an emotional whim, nor with a NIMBY mindset, but rather a group of concerned citizens who respectfully ask council to consider not approving the rezoning until all relevant traffic improvements, associated costs, safety, and clear community benefit are properly addressed. My fellow speakers, we'll be covering the traffic and safety aspects, but I would like to use this time to revisit the original intent of the current zoning and task council to consider if there is truly tangible value in shrinking the acreage previously dedicated for community benefit by over 50%, simply to facilitate the sale of land. As our group has been repeatedly reminded, a school can be built here today, it's been available for over 14 years. Rezoning will not only shrink the acreage and associated community benefit, but it also negates any opportunity for Chatham County schools to access the Chatham County land under the Joint Use Land Plan. And as a former Chatham County resident in West Cary, this topic is still something that I feel very strongly about, even though I'm a Wake County resident at the moment. Specifically, under section 6-7 titled "Public Schools," it is quote-unquote "recommended" that the town of Cary work with Chatham County to forecast future public school needs and for priority to be given to sites which support the co-location of a park and a school. This tract of land undoubtedly meets that specification as it sits adjacent to current park land. The applicant's school partner conveyed their 10-year plan at the neighborhood meeting we requested in December, so I respectfully ask why the town of Cary would not stay true to the spirit of the Joint Use Land Plan and work through the appropriate channels to offer Chatham County the same opportunity to forecast their needs inside of the next 10 years. It is no secret that Chatham County needs additional schools on the east side of Jordan Lake, and at this stage of development and progress, it is no longer accurate to say that growth in Chatham County does not support a school, because I am certain the growth opportunity was one of the main drivers for Cary to annex these 18,000 acres and craft the Joint Use Land Plan in the first place. After speaking with the former Chatham County Commissioner, Jim Crawford, last year, I confirmed that Chatham County is ready, willing, to address the need for schools and with full financial capability. My final request is for council to consider section 5-2 through 5- I'm sorry, 5-1 through 5-2 of the Joint Use Land Plan, which highlight mitigation of impact to the Jordan Lake watershed. More specifically, this tract of land contains over 20 acres of buffer streams, which feed into the upper and lower New Hope subwatersheds. Considering this and proximity to one of West Cary's most valuable amenities, the American Tobacco Trail, proactive steps should be taken here to preserve the health of these buffer streams and the vegetation that protect the integrity of the beautiful area that we call home. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayors and council members. My name's Jay Young. This is my 12th year living in Weldon Ridge neighborhood. In the past year, I have been involved in the several discussions with the town and applicant regarding this rezoning plan. The reason we are so concerned about this plan because its possible negative impacts may affect our neighborhood, not on, may impact our neighborhood for decades, not days, months, or years. Compared to last year's plan, I'm glad to see that there are several improvements in terms of mitigating negative impacts to our neighborhoods in the new proposal. However, mostly thanks to the shrink of the size of the school from 2,200 to 1,300. However, there are several areas I would like to bring up in tonight for you to consider when deciding whether or not to approve this rezoning plan. First, the lack of signaling in some major intersections around the school. Justin Namifield, Centennial Federal Road, and Yates Store Road's intersection, Weldon Ridge Broadway and Yates Stone intersection. And the lack of signaling not only proposed, caused corresponding roads not in very low level service to our neighborhood during peak hours, but also caused very bad safety concerns. Remember, when I moved into Weldon Ridge, at the beginning, there is no traffic light between Cary Glen Boulevard and Green Level Church Road. There was a period of time, there are so many accidents happened, that during ABC 11, eyewitness news came to report that during that report, an accident happened behind, in front of the camera and behind the reporter. So I wouldn't like, I would not like that to happen to those school zones, because kids may be involved, and kids are vulnerable in those accidents. So this is my first area I want you to consider. Second is lack of pedestrian support in the school zone, around school zone area. If the school is truly beneficial to the community, I would expect there are a lot of kids probably will go to that school. But it's because the school location is so close to the neighborhood, I also expect people would like to walk their kids there. But, and the walking, walking through the tree will reduce the road traffic and benefit to the traffic condition, but lack of signaling and pedestrian, and lack of pedestrian walking in their proposal made this walking unsafe. So it's defeat the benefit of the school. Third, I think another major concern is the cut-through traffic to our neighborhood, because lack of traffic lights, so the traffic condition becomes worse. If you read the TAR, the, those intersections, the level service will be F, so I would expect some smart goods will try to cut throughout neighborhood to get fast access to the road or to the school. The applicant had a mitigation plan saying that school will enforce some policies to let the students not cut, or parents not cut off this, cut off our neighborhood to avoid this situation. However, first, we didn't know that any school will have a handbook, saying that you cannot have your kids cut through our neighborhood. Second, if the policy, if 99% of students follow the policy, the policy is very successful, but 1% of bad apple will generate 10 cars, or 17, around 10 cars per day, which cause enough to cross the neighborhood, which will cause enough damage and cause enough safety consent to our neighborhood. So I think there's still some room to improve in this area. For example, can we be more innovative in terms of designing the traffic engineering? For example, can we be more innovative in terms designing the traffic engineering plan on the road, or making some signs on our neighborhood saying, "No through traffic during these hours," or something like that, to improve, further improve their plan? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Ryan McCormick. I am a resident of Cary Park. And before we begin, I just want to acknowledge and thank the following individuals, Katie Dry and Jacob Anderson. They have been reaching out to us. I also want to thank the town council, as well as Deborah Granin and everyone else for bringing this to a public hearing. As Mischa mentioned, considerable amount of time and energy has been invested in the past year to understand the full scope and impact of this rezoning proposal that will have on our community. And on behalf of the four surrounding communities this will have the greatest impact on, I ask that you do not approve this applicant's rezoning request. The proposed building structures will be created on Chatham County land. Who will bear the burden of paying for the surrounding road improvements? Wake County taxpayers. Who will benefit if this rezoning passes? Well, we know the landowner for sure, but what about Wake County residents? If this rezoning passes, the community benefit land will be reduced by a staggering fifty percent, and it will put the safety and quality of life of the four surrounding Wake County neighborhoods at considerable risk. Wake County voters depend on their elected representatives to do the right thing and to stand up for them. And if this rezoning passes, it's going to have a very negative impact. So we have a couple of questions. One is, what conditions and reassurance can council offer to address the potential delays, student tardiness, and increased cut-throughs, traffic? What are some other examples of a school this size, very big school this size, being built next to a community as densely populated? The ones we have. Probably the third most pressing one is considering the fact that we have a number of school buses that already travel on Yates Store Road, Weldon Ridge Boulevard, two to four. What can the applicant do to say that it's not going to get progressively worse? We've been asking that question for a long time. We've never really gotten a straight answer. The biggest concern that we have is the cut-through. And I would like to pass this out. I have five of these. Can please share these? This is a map that shows how many potential cut-throughs we have in our neighborhood. There are three main ways to get to this school. You've got New Hope Church Road, Yates Store Road, Weldon Ridge Boulevard. Cary Glen Boulevard is another way to get through it, but that's cutting through a bunch of neighborhoods. So there's twenty-two cut-through streets. This is just analyzing the TIR report. And I know the level of service guidelines, I guess, are non-factor here, but if you look and you analyze that traffic report, there are several circumstances where you have roads that are normally grade A, they get downgraded to grade F, and that's what all the changes. So the people of our communities, its quality of life, its safety of our neighborhood, it's what we're most concerned about. And Ms. Robinson, you know, you've been meeting with us, you've been seeing us for a past year. We're well informed. We'll do whatever we can. We're working on a good solution, but we cannot stand and allow something to happen that will compromise the safety and quality of life of the four surrounding neighborhoods. And that's why we are here, and we ask that you please not approve this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Leslie Stober. I'd like to say good evening to the council members, and I appreciate your stamina. You've been here for at least an hour and a half already. So I hope you can pay attention for a few more minutes.
This is early.
As you've heard from previous speakers, our community has concerns about this rezoning request. And I'd like to address, if you will, the intent of zoning ordinances at all. In your job, I suppose you've considered this question before. What is the purpose of zoning? In some legal documents, it's been explained that the purpose of zoning is to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of a community, to protect and conserve the value of buildings, and encourage the most appropriate use of land. For this particular parcel, the purpose of the zoning designation was for the area of a school, church, or daycare, so that the entire Weldon Ridge development would not be just one enormous housing area, but that there would be an area that was sectioned off to provide a community benefit to the people living there, as well as adjacent communities. Now, once a zoning condition has been established, rezoning is generally only allowed after the landowner can demonstrate that the land, once rezoned, will better meet the goals of the zoning conditions in the first place. In Cary, it's required that an applicant demonstrate that the rezoning meets six specific criteria that they have to put in their application. These are designed to show that the purpose of the rezoning will still meet the conditions of the original rezoning and the intent of them. First and foremost of those conditions is that the rezoning needs to correct an error or meet the challenge of a changing condition trend or fact. The applicant has not demonstrated this in any way and evades answering this question on their application and in person. What has happened here is that the landowners have learned that the land can be sold for a lot more money if it is used for housing than for the zoning uses of school, church, or daycare. Therefore, the landowners, when they purchased this land with this zoning condition in place, knew what they were getting into, but they have decided to try and dramatically increase their profits from the sale of this land. Landowners realizing more income from their land is not a valid reason for rezoning, and no condition, trend, or fact, as is required to be demonstrated, has been changed or can be demonstrated. This proposal increases the total number of houses on the land, increases the acreage devoted to housing, and relocates houses away from the main road and closer to the scenic and undeveloped area adjacent to the Tobacco Trail. These changes all serve to increase the amount of money they will get, but it's all at the expense of the proposed school. So what about this school, church, or daycare that was planned for the area? The applicant was strongly preferred not to use any of this land for that purpose, but the city of Cary has repeatedly denied rezoning requests to make the entire area residential. Therefore, what have they done? Well, they've carved out the tiniest piece of land they could possibly do to be used for a school and located it in the least preferential area to just meet the bare minimum of making an appearance that the intent of the zoning requirements can still be met. This has, in effect, angered all nearby residents about the impacts the school will have on their quality of life with regards to traffic, noise, parking, and potential school-related loitering. In addition, it has made it all the more difficult to attract a school that wants a small parcel of land with angry residents nearby. I'd also like to point out that the applicant has designated phases for developing this land, in which the residential area is phase one, the school is phase two. Not only will this permanently reduce the area of land available for a school, church, or daycare, but it is unclear whether any school, church, or daycare will ever be built on the land originally intended for this use. And even for the proposed school, if it is found that more land is needed to accommodate the required parking, carpool lane length, or stormwater retention pond area, there will be no additional land available, contrary to what I've heard tonight. If the school should want a sports field, there will be no land available for that. If this particular school, the private company, drops out, who will take its place, given these considerations? I urge the council to deny this request for rezoning on the basis that it does not meet the required conditions for rezoning, and to keep doing this until they get a proposal that clearly demonstrates that the original intent of the zoning conditions will be met. If this land is to provide a community benefit, then let's have a plan that executes that mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dear all council members, I am Ru Yang Wu. I am thirteen years old, and I have lived in Weldon Ridge for eleven years. My first memories were here. I appreciate that all of you-
Can you tell us your name first, please?
Ru Yang Wu.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Thank you. Go ahead.
I appreciate that all of you are taking the time today to listen to my concerns of having a thirteen-hundred-student private school that is so close to our community. My first concern is the track. Carpenter Fire Station bridges Highway fifty-five and Yates Store Road. Also, because this is a private school, everyone must drive there. Therefore, Yates Store Road will have to bear a lot of traffic from Highway fifty-five. This also slows carpooling from other people, like other people carpooling and people going to work. A long stretch of Yates Store Road that leads to the school site only has two lanes, and it's narrow, hilly, and slithers around. Expansion of this section does not appear to be possible due to the nature of the road. Therefore, it will be very challenging for Cary Park and Peninsula residents, along with the about eleven Wake County school buses that use Yates Store Road during peak hours. Also, Weldon Ridge Boulevard is a two-lane road with one lane in each direction. During the peak hours, we have counted eight Wake County buses that travel this road, which serve nearby Mills Park Elementary School, Middle School, Panther Creek, and others. Many people think that this short and narrow road, and it's short and narrow community street, was never supposed to support this amount of traffic into a major K through twelve campus. That does not have a busing itself, busing system itself to help reduce the load. My other big concern is safety. There's nothing to prevent high school inexperienced drivers from driving inside the community, and this could drastically increase accidents in our area, because kids like to play on the streets and there are seniors walking on the sidewalks. I see this like every week. There's kids across the street, they're like biking on the street and stuff. According to the CDC, teen drivers ages sixteen to nineteen are nearly three times more likely than drivers twenty and older to be involved in an accident. Also, there are high school pranks. I heard a true story from one of my friends who lived near a high school, that their doorbells were being rung by high schoolers that didn't have any reason to, and they noticed that they were just randomly ringing bells in the community, here, there, wherever. Again, I have been here for the past eleven years, and I really enjoyed playing on the streets a lot, and our parents weren't worried, because it was such a safe community. I sincerely hope that this is not ruined by a large thirteen-hundred-student school. I believe that all of the kids in this community would support my thoughts and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Byrd. I'm with Chatham County Economic Development Corporation in Pittsboro. First, I would like to note how hard it is to follow that. You keep it up, and you're going to be sitting there one day.
Not if you play in the street.
Kudos to that. I am here, and I just want to offer an opportunity to facilitate any discussions between Chatham County leaders, whether it's professional staff, elected officials, or Chatham County schools. I'm here. Our role is to increase investment and jobs in Chatham County. So anytime there's any kind of project in our joint land use area, please feel free to call on us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, council members. My name is Maria Calandria. I live at six hundred Elon Hall Road, about eight hundred feet from the proposed development. And I thank you tonight for taking the time to listen to us. I just wanted to talk about some of the local Wake County schools with the following acreage and student population. Mills Park School has about twenty acres with eight hundred students. Fortuns Creek, eighteen acres with nine hundred students. Mills Park Middle, thirty-five acres with one thousand three hundred eleven students. And Panther Creek with ninety-three acres and one thousand six hundred and sixty-three students. The reason why I mention that is, my son, we live about two miles from Mills Park. It takes him about an hour to get home from school, because they make multiple bus runs. So, but in addition, the acreage is not only used for school development, play fields, et cetera, but for needing, needed queuing. Now, the development proposal says that there's enough queuing, and I hope that's true, but our concern is spillage onto the roads. The rezoning request proposes to move the school location closer to Yates Store and place this large K through twelve school with a maximum of thirteen hundred students on a total of seventeen acres. The concern with the rezoning is that it will not allow for adequate queuing and inevitably cause spillage onto the roads. I understand that the town of Cary has no say on the type of school, but a school without buses will cause a traffic mess. Since Thales is one of, Thales is one of the school that has interest in the location, I had looked up some of the traffic information that was online, and from Apex Thales, located at eleven seventy-seven Amber Gate Drive, there's a total of three hundred and seventy-eight students per website statistics. And on citidata.com, which is a forum, a community forum, there was someone that asked, "We are looking for properties in Apex near Thales Middle School and High School. Is the traffic there a big issue?" And one of the comments is that, in quotations, "I think it's bad. If you're coming from downtown Apex, you will hit the line before you get to Apex Peakway, and it will take about twenty minutes to get past the Thales entrance." In order to sound, not to sound redundant, four out of five of the comments were negative around the traffic. I want to remind the town council the guiding principles of this joint land use plan on page two point three. Ensure public involvement in the development in and implementation of the joint use plan, which I'm so grateful that the town of Cary has graciously done this by allowing us to speak today. Second, to balance the amount of future development with the capacity of the transportation system. This has been discussed by my fellow citizens in excess, and the TAR report gives the current infrastructure a failing grade. Third, to create a sense of place that is distinct, attractive, and high-quality. With the increase in traffic, decrease in safety, and lack of infrastructure, this is contrary to the proposed guideline. And lastly, to ensure public rights of residents and landowners in the joint plan area. As citizens of the town of Cary, I look to you to represent my family and I, and my fellow citizens, ensuring that we have a safe place to live and our community continues to be a desirable location. I bring these guideline principles up because I know that you, the town council, want to do what's right for their citizens. I want to ask, has anyone visited this site? You have. So you know that the roads there are pretty bad. Okay. So Yates Store Road is designated a thoroughfare. The problem is that the road is not fully built out and to its planned four lanes, and it's not in the town of Cary's plan, that ten-year plan. Does anyone here see that area being developed anywhere, anytime soon? Probably not. So the planned road capacity consistent with a thoroughfare is really a pipe dream for the next decade or longer. This is not consistent with the guideline of balancing the amount of future development with the capacity of transportation. This rezoning request will need an amendment to the joint plan as the proposed boundaries do not correspond with the boundaries identified in the Cary Joint Land Plan. So again, our citizens ask, is there community benefit? In summary, I'm asking the town council to deny the approval of the rezoning until conditions are more congruent to the joint use plan. We're asking for reduced student size, decrease the traffic burden, and ensuring community safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Bowles. I'm with Baker Residential, and we're a land developer and home builder, and we have a project just a little bit south of this site, Providence at Yates Pond. And our project is divided between Chatham and Wake County. And so we feel that we would really like to have school opportunities nearby to our residents, Cary residents that are in that Chatham County side. Right now, it's a very long distance to get across Jordan Lake to the public schools in Chatham, and a pretty good distance to get into any private or charter opportunities. And I think in the long term, I think the council would like to see, you know, equity between Cary citizens that live a hundred feet from each other or less, that they have equal opportunities to, for the school- um, that they have equal opportunities to, um, for the school, uh, uh, school choices. So, um, anyway, I think, uh, certainly heard a lot of the concerns that people have, uh, for traffic and other thing. I think, I know Cary has a very strong development ordinance. Um, you know, a lot of these items will get addressed in a site plan issue. So, um, I urge support for this rezoning request.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Ting Yu. I'm a resident in the Weldon Ridge for about twenty year, twelve years. So today, I'm here to share a story with you, not a pretty one. So, it's been five years. Some neighbors still remember the beautiful girl, Laura. She was fifteen-years-old, student from Panther Creek High. On September twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, she was on the way to school in the morning, and her car was hit by truck in the intersection of Highway fifty-five and McRimore Parkway, about half-mile from the school. Her beautiful life stopped at that moment. Is this just accident due to the carries of the driver? No. There was twenty-eight serious accidents happened on that single intersection, and she was victim of twenty-nine. Before the terrible accident took Laura's life, the parents of Panther Creek High School students and the residents around the intersection already see the issues and raise concerns about the faulty design of the intersection and urge the town of Cary and NCDOT to improve the situation. Emails, phone calls, and the meeting requests were sent to the town of Cary and NCDOT, but nothing much was done. Finally, a left turn signal and other improvement were installed on that intersection after the fatal accident. However, we lost Laura, a fourteen-years-beautiful-life forever, which could be avoided. So, I spoke out last year, and I'm here today again to urge you, our town council members, to consider our concerns and evaluate the rezoning request for Weldon Ridge seventeen, restating seriously. I followed the procedure the whole time. I read the request multiple times, joined the developers' neighborhood meeting last December, but to my disappointment, I'm unable to find any valid solution to address the potential huge traffic and safety issue to our community. So just one example of this faulty requirement. So, the developers is using a remote error model to predict the traffic pattern in our area. So, anyone who can go out at peak hours in the morning, in the evening in Cary will realize this is not realistic. They will have different opinion. So, this is a faulty rezoning request that may create lots more tragedies like Laura's case. I have a big concern on it, and I believe a lot of fellow neighbors here hold the same concerns as well. Some people think we are here opposed building a new school. This is simply not true. We are all benefits from education and know how important to support school. We do support school. We support to build a school at the original site and oppose rezoning request to move school site next to Yates Store, next to our community, because it brings more traffic and safety issue to the community of Weldon Ridge and Cary Park. We don't want to have the tragedies of Laura repeated in our community. The safety of neighbors and of kids in the community is not any compromise at any time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Um, my name is Teri Salmy, and, um, as a representative and being responsible for new homes sales for Stanley Martin at our Wood Hall location. It's located right off of Luter Shop Road and Morrisville Parkway, right over the Wake and Chatham County lines. Um, I just wanted to express that schools are a common question that come my way um, and concern, concerns from potential buyers. Um, and I'm confident as the western area of Cary continues to expand that the Chatham side needs some non-residential churches and schools to start to create a sense of community and place and positively contribute to the growth of Western Cary in Chatham County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayor and councilpeople. Uh, my name is Charlie Bugey. I live at O'Kelly Chapel Road, um, in Cary in Chatham County. And, uh, I'm a, also a member of, um, with the Teresa Catholic Commission Church, and, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, moving as soon as possible. We've been meeting for many years in a local high school. And, uh, many of the folks there, including myself, were thinking about, were hoping that, uh, this would move along in a timely fashion, and we thank everybody. And I know that it's not easy, and no one, uh, most of the time you can't, everyone can't be a hundred percent happy, but, uh, I do appreciate all the effort and time that all of you folks have been putting in. And I know that my family, who also go there, uh, are happy about moving there and also about the, uh, that Thales Academy that would be going there because of the great amount of construction that's in the area. So I just wanted to thank everyone and, uh, just hopefully that, uh, this would come about in a timely fashion so we can get into a real church. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. Good evening, council members. My name is Michelle Hendricks, and I am a longtime Cary resident, thirteen years in Weldon Ridge this month. My husband and I moved in fully aware that there was to be a church and a school within walking distance. This was deemed to be a benefit to the community, and I could not disagree at the time. My particular focus tonight is regarding the need to ensure that the recommended traffic improvements occur. I am seriously disturbed by a lot of the language in the traffic study, as many of my neighbors are. I can quote from the TAR. "There are intersections where recommended improvements do not comply with the NCDOT congestion management guidelines." However, constructing improvements to meet these guidelines are not always feasible for school projects. We have signals, um, intersections that will operate at a level of service below what is required by the town's own land development ordinance, which we don't seem to be able to enforce. We have, will encounter problems where the manual and uniform traffic control devices is determined that the peak hour volumes of traffic generated by the school will not warrant the installation of traffic signals where they are suggested by the own, by the traffic study. The intersection of Yates Store Road and Weldon Ridge Boulevard is one of the worst ones, and it was identified by, uh, Katie as one of the places needing mitigation during her own presentation. Um, this intersection is an example of many of the highlighted traff, in, within the traffic study. The applicant will be allowed to profit from building more than one hundred active lifestyle homes and a school on a greatly reduced acreage than was originally planned for under the Cary-Chatham Joint Use Land Plan and the current zoning, all the while while not having to follow the typical guidelines and land development ordinance. Why does it seem that the applicant is being treated solely as a developer of the school? What about all those houses that they're shifting this land around to build? They generate traffic too. Well, generate profit for the landowners for sure. The TAR's analysis on the intersection of Weldon Ridge Boulevard and Morrisville Parkway does not take into consideration that Weldon Ridge Boulevard is planned to extend across Morrisville Parkway. It doesn't take into consideration the fact that there will be greatly increased traffic once Morrisville Parkway is connected across Highway fifty-four with an exit and entrance ramp to the highway. The more I learned about land development and traffic through my research, the more problems I had with traffic studies. They don't take into consideration factors more than a mile away. And when a new five forty interchange is one of those factors, I have a problem as a resident in that community. How do we get timely and appropriate traffic improvements? When even after a traffic signal is approved, it takes well over a year to start to build it in cases. My case in point is at the intersection of Carpenter Fire Station Road and Yates Store Road, a dangerous intersection that has needed a light for many years. And the current date to start construction is December of two thousand and nineteen. It was approved for last year. Finally. Thank you. Due to the Senate Bill two hu- five seven, the town cannot require the traffic improvements as a condition of the rezoning, because it is the town and the taxpayers who will pay for them. Yet again, another obstacle to our citizens' safety. The residents have been told by the developer that the traffic signals have to be approved by the DOT. The developer is not about to pay for anything they're not legally required to, even if it is a safety issue and would go a long way to appeasing the community as a whole. When asked, the town employees have told us residents that there are cases where the town installs lights before the DOT takes over maintenance of the road or on the roads that the town maintains themselves. Case in point, Cary Glen and Green Level Church Road. I understand that the applicant is to monitor certain intersections to see if the proper legalistic terms are met for a single, signal. But how can the council help protect its citizens and ensure that we get pro, the proper signalization? If there is a school to be built out in the Yates Store area, we need to ensure the start and stop times are coordinated with the Wake County Department of Transportation to ensure the public school buses can safely make their numerous routes on time. I'd like to make the council aware of the fact that most of these buses in West Cary make double and even triple runs at each school they serve. The increased traffic and significant delays at multiple intersections during these times the buses run, this is of great concern to the neighborhood. The applicant has stated that the school is willing to adjust its start times to accommodate the public school's start times. I'd like to see this as a condition if the rezoning is to be approved. My concern is once the proposed school wraps up to its total capacity and causes traffic delays, they won't be willing to alter their time schedule at that point.
I'm sorry, but your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayor and councilor. Um, my name is JP Zoo. I live in I- seven zero seven Ivy Shore Road, which is about five hundred feet from the proposed rezoning site. Um, I, I have two kids. And, uh, my mother-in-law, she is already over eighty years old. He's living with me, with all my family. And, uh, you know, I'm an immigrant from China. You know, we have some tradition to live with our parents. And, uh, my mother, she's eighty-two, will come to join us soon. So I will have two adults who are over eighty, eighty years old, you know, live with me. So, you know, this rezoning plan concerned me very much because it didn't address the traffic issue. I mean, I just imagine if, if something happened, I mean, some, some, some emergency thing happened to my mother, and my mother is not too adult, too elder, over eighty years old. I mean, the EMS cannot come in, you know, in the traffic hour. It will be very big traffic for them. So, I'm, I'm here, you know, just representing my mother and my mother-in-law, asking you to deny the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Lombana. I've lived in far western Cary for almost fifteen years. And as you're aware, we've had significant growth out there to the point that it's almost unrecognizable from when we moved here in two thousand and four. Most amenities and so forth have kept up with our growth, and we've built a strong sense of community out there. Heaven knows we have plenty of grocery stores now, parks are planned and so forth. What we're short on is schools. They've built new schools, and almost all of them are capped. Some of them are being capped within a year to two of openings, such as Horton's Creek. I believe we strongly need an altern, an alternative out there of a private school uh, to serve the residents of Cary Park, or Cary, West Cary, sorry, I'm nervous. Cary Park, Weldon Ridge, all the surrounding communities. Um, this plan seems to be greatly improved over the initial plan that was put forth at the end of two thousand and seventeen. It looks like they have reduced the size. They've come up with plans to help with traffic and so forth. It's also not an immediate plan. There aren't going to be thirteen hundred students there from day one. It's more of a ten-to-twelve-year plan. And I have faith that you, staff, and so forth will come up with what we need in order to mitigate the traffic features out there. So I strongly encourage you to support the plan as it comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Lou Mamo. I live at seven oh eight Arborbrook Drive, which is in the Amelie subdivision area. I've been there for about eleven years. I've shared with the previous speaker of how much growth we've seen out there. I attended last year, last year's public hearing on this topic, on the rezoning request. I have remewed the new plan at the community meeting that was held in December in downtown Cary. And this is clearly a superior plan over what was submitted last year. As seen, the new school size has been greatly reduced from over two thousand students to thirteen hundred students when it's fully developed, which is, when I saw, was about a five-to-ten-year plan. The site, uh, plan proposed exceeded the car stacking requirements that, that I understand, uh, to help ensure the vehicles involved in picking up the students can be accommodated on their site, not in the community, uh, in their school plan. It is my belief that the traffic on the surrounding communities will op, be optimized on the si, with the proposed site plan and the planned road improvements that I saw, uh, at the community meeting. I believe the proposed school will be an asset to the communities and this, to the communities in the surrounding areas. The proposed school has an excellent reputation for providing high education. Considering the high growth projected for this area Cary, Cary, the need for school is justified. Given that a school has previously been zoned for the site, I believe the plan is an excellent plan, and I support the approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, town council, um, my name's Michael Roach. I'm with Thales Academy. I, um, work on our development, uh, real estate and, uh, permitting and, uh, basically from when we select a site to going through full permitting, uh, I'm involved. Uh, we actually initially looked at this site about five, five or six years ago. Um, uh, maybe not that long ago, but, um, when it was the, the larger site in the back. And at that point, um, it was not feasible for us, um, as a, a private school to, uh, go on a site that large. Um, I believe, uh, the town set that aside for a school, um, probably most likely with the idea that a, a public school was going to go there. Um, their requirements, and, and now I could be wrong, but, uh, that much land is typical of a, a public school. Um, our private schools, uh, we have, uh, five K-five Thales academies right now, uh, open. Uh, Apex, um, Wake Forest, Knightdale, um, Holly Springs, uh, Waxaw, which is south of Charlotte. Um, we also have two junior high high schools, uh, Apex and, and Rollsville. Um, we have, uh, of all of our schools, our K-five schools range from three acres to six acres. Our junior high high school schools are nine to, uh, about, uh, twelve or thirteen acres. We do not want more land. More land is, uh, a, a much higher cost to maintain. Um, our buildings are set up very efficiently. Uh, our K-five building is a thirty-two thousand square foot building. Our, uh, junior high high school building is a fifty-five thousand square foot building. Our K-five- Our K-5 has 450 students ideally. Our junior high school, 650 students. We've built these schools, we've run these schools. Thales was started over 10 years ago. We are not a management company that just builds a building and then has someone else run the schools. We're involved in the day-to-day operations of all of our schools. We do work with our neighbors, with the towns, with the local police department. There's always going to be something that will come up or change over the course of the years of the school. And we are proactively working with our communities to address any concerns that people have. Being a private school, we are not guaranteed students. The people who pay for our school are the parents, most likely, of the students. We want to be a good neighbor to everyone, to Weldon Ridge, to any of the neighborhoods around us. Their potential, and actually, looking at this site, we have over 100 Cary students that go to our Apex School, where this location would be even walkable for some of them, from the Weldon Ridge and surrounding areas. This area also, because we are a private school, we can accept students from Chatham Side or Wake Side. I believe if you use this as a public school, you're going to have a big, long line that the school's going to be nailed up against to. Whenever you look at a school site, you want to be able to have a big circle with your building in the middle so you can bring people from all directions in the shortest amount of time as possible. If you have a Chatham County public school there, they're only going to be able to bring part of their people over there. And then you have the lake. So it's very challenging, I would think, for the public schools to justify a site out We are open to, we've met with staff numerous times, we've met with the neighbors numerous times. We performed the tar as required by the town of Cary. And we accepted every recommendation and said we would be more than willing to do those improvements. We've also spoke with staff and-
Roach, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you.
Okay.
Your time has expired.
I would like to offer to Town Council and the mayor, if you have any questions of the school or our process, I'd be more than happy to meet with you as needed. And any concerns neighbors may have, we'd be more than happy to give you our, address those for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is George Donaldson. I'm a resident of Weldon Ridge. Thank you for your time. The land development order states that the council should consider the following criteria when reviewing all proposed zoning. In the proposed zoning, rezoning, consistent with a comprehensive plan, it is proposed to ensure that the town and other services provide, will be provided sufficient public safety, educational, recreational, transportation, and utility facilities and service to this subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service to exist in development. Ensure that the proposed rezoning will not have sufficient adverse implements on other property in the vicinity of the subject tract. As we have been advised, a school can be built on the current land zone. We ask this rezoning be denied until community, safety, and infrastructure is met. On a personal note, you know, my son goes to Mills Park Middle School, lets out at 3:00, and he doesn't get home till 4:00. It's about two hours, about two miles from my house. Now the 1,300 students, 1,300 cars in the area at that time, is going to be delayed. All the schoolchildren of all Mills Park Middle School, Elementary, Panther Creek, it's going to affect all of them. An hour is a ridiculous amount of time to come for two miles to get home. More than that, it's just not, not what it should be. Thank you for time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Last call. Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and I'll invite Ms. Dry back up, and I'll ask you to put up the slide of the legislation, please. So the majority of the comments I heard were about traffic. It's my understanding, we can't consider that. We can't talk about it. We can't make a decision on it. And I'll look at our attorney, too, as I asked all these questions.
Well, Mayor, you can't. The gentleman who last spoke talked about the criteria for rezoning and the level of service. The one thing the statute prohibits is considering the level of service of roads in a decision.
I got that. Let's get specific. Car lane length, can we consider that?
Mayor, these are interesting questions. We can look more closely at the legislation.
Okay. Look at the car lane length, I want to know about that. Queuing, I want to know about that. Cut-through traffic, I want to know about that. Mitigation, I want to talk about that. We can't make them do anything. They have to offer everything. So we really can't mitigate anything, and we can't require any traffic improvements, is my understanding.
Well, Mayor, we can require improvements made to, made that are connected to the school and are required for safe ingress and egress. However, the town would have to pay for those or reimburse them for that.
And then the road in question, Yates Store Road, is that a DOT road?
From my understanding, it will be a DOT road, but they have not taken over ownership and maintenance.
So when does that happen? Because that's going to preface my next question. So if it's a DOT road, they don't have to abide by the same rules as we do? Because their state-
The same requirement for reimbursement would apply to the DOT.
Okay. So DOT would have to pay for the roads as well?
For improvements that were required, yes, would have to reimburse them to a state road.
Okay. Let's see, let me get to my other things. I can tell you, in general, traffic is extremely frustrating, especially when we have our hands tied behind our back and we take the heat for everything. And that sucks. Especially, I remember very vividly the fatal accident that happened out there at a DOT intersection, DOT roads, and while they're on the air, they're blaming us, and we were furious, and we couldn't do anything about it. And I know my colleagues that were with me watched that, and that was so infuriating. It still makes my blood boil today. But anyway-
Mayor, if I could interrupt for one minute, too. Traffic safety issues are not addressed in the legislation and would be a legitimate ground for-
That I get, but DOT controls when traffic lights are put in, DOT controls the criteria. All we can do is say, "Mother may I." But we take all their heat, and that's my point. And that's infuriating as well. So I have an auditorium almost full of citizens that are mad, and rightfully so, and I can't tell them anything that's going to help them, which is infuriating. So I'm just putting that out there. And then I'm going to cut on some of the other things that I heard, because it's really frustrating to hear my citizens asking me for help, and I can't do anything. The thought about, or the comments about the school, just to be clear, this is a rezoning, so we're talking about a type of thing. We can't consider the school. So it could be a Thales, it could be anything. And so we can't, you can talk how great the school is or how bad the school is, it doesn't matter. We can't consider it, and we won't consider it in our decision. And also, let's see, what else? Well, I better stop before I say stuff I'm not supposed to say. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues and let them speak. It's your district, you know this area very well.
I do, and I distinctly remember the Weldon Ridge application process that went through, partly in 2003, but finished up in 2004. And Jack was on the council with me, and I believe some of you were on Planning and Zoning Board at the time, so you may have seen it then. You may recall that Weldon Ridge had a certain, to be consistent with the comprehensive plan at the time, it had a certain density that was allowed for the entirety of Weldon Ridge. And the land planner came to us and said, "We really want greater density, and to accomplish that greater density, we would like to dedicate these 58.55 acres for a public purpose, such as a school or a church." And at the time, I believe the Catholic Church was interested, St. Michael's was interested in developing it. So we actually went through some calculations to transfer the density that they would have gotten for the overall parcel with their, you know, allowing for their buffers and their park dedication, blah, 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 and move it all into one area. So we went much more dense in this area than we anticipated going, so that we could then save, you know, give them the credit for the land that wouldn't get units. And so then we said, "But don't come back to us and ask us for a rezoning, because this is going to be for a public purpose." And over the years, since 2004, I have met on occasion with the owners, and it changed hands. The people who bought it understood the zoning at the time, and that was their, you know, buyer beware, that's what they got. They came to me soon after and said, "Well, what about, could we just go ahead and move some of this to townhomes?" And I said, "This was supposed to be for a public purpose. We transferred these density credits basically over to this other land, so go find a public purpose." It could have been a YMCA, a church, a temple, other schools, I don't care if they're public, private, it doesn't matter, it was supposed to be on this land. So now, we're here in 2019, and we're being asked to take not a small reduction on the size of the school site, but a major reduction, so that the new school site is 30% the size of the original, and give out 104 more units. To me, there's a problem. I just feel like what has happened is they've waited long enough for people to start to forget what the agreement was, so that they can then benefit from selling the land for residential purposes. So then I think, okay, well, let me be open-minded and see, maybe this would work. Maybe this school site is appropriate. One thing I want to caution everybody is, we can't compare this new proposal to the last proposal. The last proposal, just forget about it, it doesn't matter. Because you can't say, "Well, this is so much better than the last proposal," because that proposal has gone away. We've started new. So it's this proposal against what the current zoning is now. So I look at this, and I'm a mother of four children, so I'll disclose that. Do I want my children to go to a school that has so little green space? So I took some time to color in the road and the parking. And when you do that on this drawing, you can see how little green space is left. I think it's just too little space for the type of school that we're looking for in this community. I don't think it creates what one person referred to as a sense of place. I don't think it creates the balance that we are looking for out here. And I don't think that our original intent of the rezoning back in 2004 is now being met. I think that this is too much of a departure. Had the applicant come to me and said, "You know, may I have a 10% reduction in the size of the public purpose space?" I'd be like, "Yeah, 10%. You know, I can kind of move on that, give you six acres." But to go down to this degree is just too substantial. And I've really tried to be open-minded about this, but I don't see this being the right fit for our community. And stacking is a problem on every tight school space for these private schools. I think we're allowed to talk about stacking, I don't think that's covered by the ordinance or by the law, the state legislature. But I think that, in my opinion, for the betterment of the community, we should be looking at, trying to follow the original intent of this land use plan. And I think there is encouraging opportunities to work with Chatham County. I think it's a timing issue. I think that they're growing up, we're growing out, and I think that the time will come in the near future, when it would be a good opportunity for us to work with Chatham County on this site. And I don't want us to have, in Chatham County, with all the development that's going out in our portion of Chatham County, the same problem that has occurred in Wake County, where we start running out of school sites, and suddenly we're turning around going, "We don't have enough school sites for the population out here." And we have a lot of density out here, both in Wake and in Chatham. So that's my opinion, and I'm sorry to be so passionate, but I'm kind of irritated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jennifer and I are both irritated, apparently. Anybody else calm enough to make remarks?
I have a couple of questions, if that's all right. Going back to the S-1A and S-1B, S-1B is, also has the definition for a school, preschool, daycare, and church, but we keep on hearing that it's a church. If it's a, just my feedback, if it's a church to the applicant, then condition it as a church, please. I don't want to go through the whole, "Oh, well, actually, we turn around and another school ends up there. Oh, surprise, second school."
Would that be bad?
Well, we wouldn't have had the discussion about stacking, about carpool, about green space. I mean, just tell us what it's going to be, because right now, it seems like all of our conversation and discussion is focused on the school. But we're actually here to rezone the entire part, and we're spending a whole lot of time just talking about S-1A. So that's just, that's just my concern, that it could actually be two schools. And if that's the case, then I'd want to know more information, right, about that second school.
If I could, just as a point of clarification, the applicant's actually chosen to leave S-1B out of the rezoning application. So the current uses allowed in the S-1 tract are school, preschool, church, daycare, that they are, they're leaving S-1B as-is and have not included it in the application. So if they were to condition it to be a church, they would need to add it into the application.
So S-1 is really, it's not S-1A and S-1B as you have marked here, it's really just S-1?
S-1 with its current limits actually extends down to Yates Store. And let me see if I can find a good slide to illustrate that.
Because the picture on the staff report looked different.
So you can see this is the current limits of S-1 and extends down to Yates Store, lining up with Weldon Ridge. And so the applicant's chosen to leave this portion out of the application, so the current uses would stand as-is for this portion, and it would be by de facto S-1B, the remainder that was left out of the rezoning.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you give me the total difference in acreage from the original S-1 and the current S-1A and B?
Yes, give me just a moment. So the current, so if we look on the left-hand side, the current acreage for S-1 is 58, just over 58 acres approximately. And what they're proposing is to break it out into S-1A and S-1B, S-1A being approximately 17 acres, the remaining S-1B would be approximately 19 acres, 19 to 20 acres.
Okay, since I'm terrible at math, 58 acres to 36 acres?
Yes.
Okay.
The other question I had was, the, sorry, I lost my place. Oh, if I understand it right, it's double, more than double the number of residents, because before it was already 46?
That's correct, yes.
And going to 104, correct?
Yes.
Not 104 more.
Yep.
And, but the acreage is going, now I've lost my place, it's three times the size of the original zoning for residents.
That's correct. It's going from approximately nine acres up to around 33 and a half acres.
Okay, so it's actually less dense, right, for this new one, rather than the-
That's correct. The current density is at five dwelling units.
Right.
The density would go down to around three dwelling units, just under-
2.99, right, got it.
Original lot sizes were 5,200 square feet, these are 8,000.
8,000. Okay, thank you. I'll let someone else-
Other comments?
I want to quickly stand corrected that it's 62% of the original size and not 30%. So when you corrected the number, so I wanted to just stand corrected on that.
And the number of homes as well.
The-
You stated 104 additional homes. You stated 104 additional homes.
Right, so 104 is the proposal, yeah.
4 difference, and 60 more homes.
It's 60 more homes, that is correct.
No.
Mr. Yerha?
We've had two excellent public hearings tonight, I think. This one was especially interesting, because most of the emails, overwhelming number of emails that we received prior to this, were all in support, and the overwhelming number of speakers we're hearing tonight are overwhelmingly against. So, it's not going to be an easy one for us here, that's for sure. And it's also interesting that we keep hearing, "School, school, 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 school," whereas the major difference is that increase in units from 46 to 104. And I was going to reference exactly, Jennifer, what you did. I was going to give a little history lesson, you know how much I like history lessons, but you beat me to it. And that bothers me more than anything with this. The school, the size of the school property, I don't know, I need to think of that more. But to actually go from 46 to 104 and sort of slip that in, and everybody talk just about, "School, school, school," is disturbing. And I think we need to really look at that as we move on. Of course, the major school issue has to do with road improvements, and that's something in which we're so limited in what we can do. We're not exactly even 100% sure what that is at this point. So, I'm just sure glad we don't have to make a decision on this tonight, and that we can get more information. But I really thank the speakers for saying everything that needed to be said, I guess, and to prepare us for the months ahead, and prepare the Planning and Zoning Board for what they have to do with this.
Other comments?
I heard some comments earlier, and I believe it came out that, from the Imagine Cary Plan, the Cary Community Plan, that part of our goal was maybe some joint park, school park usage. And if you look at the current plan for the S1, it's next to two town parks that are marked as town parks. So, in the current configuration, we have opportunity to have joint. I know there's a watershed, it looks like there's a stream buffer, but you can put bridges across streams. But it still, it looks to me like in the current location, fits better the Cary Community Plan, because you would be able to share some park and put a school next to parks, and you have that synergy, like we've done other places, where the town shares facilities, whether it's tennis, or whether it's softball, or whatever it might be. So, that's just one comment, that's why I think it's in favor of the previous plan. And then the lack of sports fields for the school, even if it's a private school that can't afford to build sports fields, if they build a private school next to the town where there are fields, and they can apply for use to rent town fields. So, it seems to me like we're going the wrong direction for our plan. So, let's, as Ms. Robinson said, let's look at what the current zoning versus what the proposal, not forget that middle column, and think about if they put 2,200 students in the existing area, and if Chatham County came to us and said, "We want to buy that land, and we want to..." They don't want to buy, they don't come to us. They say, they make that arrangement, and they come to us and say, "We'd like to rezone it, and we'd like to put a public school here with 2,200 students." We won't be able to make, we can't, the same, our hands are still tied for the roads. But also, the safety thing that we talked about, we're not tied for safety, it seems to me like cut-through streets is different than level of service. I think you were getting at, and you're asking...
I was trying to figure it out.
Is that if level of service means how long you wait at a stop sign, whether you've got an F intersection or whatever, now, if that's, I think, Jerry Jensen nodding yes, if that's level of service, that doesn't tell you, you could have 20 cut-through streets that you don't have to wait at that stop sign, but you could be concerned about the kids or the neighborhoods, those 20. The level of service might even be sufficient, but you still could be concerned about the safety. And that doesn't have to do with the level of service, that has to do with the safety. And I think, so to me, safety is a different issue. And I'm certainly concerned about safety with all these optional cut-throughs, especially with the apps and the high school kids, they're going to use their apps to get to school, whether it's public or private, I see that. So, that was my comment on the level of service. And then, I guess there was a time scheduling question about whether it was conditioned, and I didn't, I heard, but was it, but it was a fixed schedule?
Staggering is in the condition.
Staggering it to themselves, but not staggering it as compared to the public schools, which could be a different condition, because I heard the concern from the neighbors that, "What if the public schools change their start-stop times, and then it hits exactly the same time this one does? Then they can't even change their start-stop times without coming back to us for rezoning." Would that be correct, if it's a condition?
Yep.
So, it seems to me like it shouldn't be conditioned to fixed times, it should be conditioned to float with public schools, so that you actually have a total, holistic approach to start-stop times, not just start-stop times for one school. It just, it's my comment on that. And I'm with Ms. Robinson, I don't know that, you know, when people, "It's buyer beware," and, you know, personally, this density, I wrote the question down earlier, are we rezoning for a school, or are we rezoning for homes? It was already going to be a school, and if it's less of a school, that's a smaller school, then it'd be like a more stringent condition, we might not even have to look at it, because they could build a 1,300 school without, but they couldn't build 104 homes without coming to us. So, to me, I'm thinking this is a home rezoning, like Ms. Yerha said. So, if I were to deny something, I'd deny it on basis of the homes, because that's what we're, I'm rezoning for homes as I look at it, because it's, that's the major difference, is the homes here. That's what's almost, a big difference is the homes.
I think we're having a lot of conversation about a topic that...
Supposed to be a public hearing.
I get that.
And it's my fault, I started us down this path.
No, but we do this, this is a matter of practice, where we discuss our concerns, belonging is important, so I don't think we should be sorry for that.
Well, I'm referring specifically to, you know, what's lawful, what's not lawful, and...
Well, are we not considering homes here?
All three.
It's part of it, it's part of it.
I don't know that we should be talking about, if I was going to deny it, what would I deny it on? That's not the thing.
The homes is what bothers me, because I think a school is going to still be there. See, I'm saying there's still going to be traffic, there's still going to be traffic...
He's just saying with the denial.
Yeah, just provide feedback to the applicant.
My feedback is that there's homes, the home increase is huge.
Excuse me, let me try. Can a condition about staggering times be considered? It doesn't really go with the land, it seems like it's not really a normal condition. Enforcable, yeah.
Sure. So, they do have a condition to stagger their start times amongst themselves, within the schools within the site. That can be enforced, because a school management plan is required with a development plan for the school, and that the town has the traffic management plans on file for schools.
Ms. France, do you have comments?
Yeah, this is my 12th year sitting in this seat, which is why sometimes it gets a little irritating when people want to quote our own LDO back to me. I've read it a number of times. I can tell you that every single time a school is brought up for rezoning, everybody wants a school just not near them. I don't ever recall one that didn't have crazy opposition, and the number-one complaint being traffic. "I don't want traffic coming through my neighborhood, I was going to have longer wait times, et cetera, et cetera." I'm looking at this as, honestly, up until this discussion, I kind of saw this as a positive when I read the staff report. We're going from 2,200s possible, 2,200 students to 1,300 capped. If traffic is your concern, it's 900 less possible trips. The staff report indicates it's a 63% reduction in traffic in the AM, and a 53% reduction in traffic on the PM versus what could be built today. All of the carpool lines, I actually found the site plan to be very well-designed, so that it moves most all the, I would guess, all of the traffic off the road and internal to the site. I get the concern that they're not going to be, there's no buses for the kids, but, you know, when I get stuck behind the same bus, stopping every 400 feet and stopping traffic, I don't really find that that moves traffic too well. So, actually, I can see no buses as a positive, and honestly. Yeah, it's adding 60 houses, it's also increasing the lot size, it goes less dense. We've, some of the comments were from the group, from the homeowners, or one of the neighborhoods, there was five people that showed up. One was complaining about traffic, and then the next person was complaining that the school wasn't big enough. And I just, I can't jive those two. If you want a bigger school, you're going to get more traffic. If you want less traffic, then you might want a smaller school.
You might have been referring to the school site.
You know, I get that some of the concerns, there's no athletic facilities, or what, you know, that's a fair concern. And I get that we can't consider who the end user is, but the reality is, if this were to go through and get rezoning, it's no longer marketable to a public school, it's probably going to be private, and the type that probably wouldn't have public facilities. To the lady that came here from Chatham County Economic Development, nice to meet you, never heard of you, never seen you before. So, if you guys are interested in this site...
Start talking.
Might want to start reaching out. Actually, pulled up your website here to try to learn a little bit about you, since never heard of you. There's actually an education tab on it, and all it talks about is the wonderful colleges and career training in Chatham County. I actually kind of think the uses, the church and the school provides a, what it was called, a community benefit. I don't think the applicant's adding 60 schools to, for some financial windfall, I really The whole thing with the state legislature and what they've done to tie our hands on road improvement, I'll echo the mayor's comment, sucks. Actually, I was kind of stunned to hear him say it, I think I might have worried off on him. But, you know, I would encourage every single one of you to contact your state legislators, contact your state senators, and let them know what you think. Let them know this is what you're going to do to your community, because they're the ones that make this decision. And it wouldn't be the first time they did something that totally screwed over our community. So, I'm going to leave it at that, those are my thoughts right now. If I had to vote on this tonight, you know, I'm kind of leaning towards it, but we're not supposed to talk about that. So, I would encourage the applicant and the residents to continue to work together, there might be some other things that could be done to make this more amenable to all parties involved. But at the end of the day, I am going to sit here and judge a case on, is this better than what can be built today? And at this point, I think it is.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm starting to feel like a minority with, when I looked at this, I was actually getting kind of excited that I thought it was a reasonable plan. So, for all the things that Don said, and I don't want to repeat them, there's a couple of things I heard that I just have some questions on. I heard that the residential, I don't know if it came out from one of the citizens or from the applicant, is that senior living? Is there any condition on there about what that is?
No, there's no conditions proposed, so we don't have the age.
Yeah. Well, a couple of observations. One, the applicant, I think, said once or twice that he's kind of new to the area, new to dealing with Cary. Welcome, but, you know, my reaction to all of this is, if I was looking at this plan, even though I saw a lot of merit to it, I'd put it under needs improvement. Now, you know, you were talking earlier, Mr. France, about some of the comments made. It's very frustrating sitting here when you have a program, a community of, coming up with their concerns, and they start every one of, "Here's why I want you to deny." What I want to hear from you are, "What are your concerns?" Sometimes it was embedded in that after you reminded us to deny this. But this is a process, we're just starting the process. And, you know, you ought to be reaching out to an applicant that, you know, has some ideas that may work. And there are a lot of contradictions in what I heard about, "Do you want bigger schools, smaller schools?" Now, Jennifer, I thought it was a great history lesson, that was important to kind of refresh us and remember the intent and the purpose. And what I recall is, one of the reasons we were excited about that being, basically, this mega Catholic complex, is that it wasn't tied to boundaries. You know, we weren't going to have a site at a county line that's beholden to one, you know, one county or another, so that it would be kind of a disparate use, you know, if it becomes a public school. And contrary to what you read in the social media, if you look at the studies about private schools in this area, for the most part, they have helped and aided the public school system. So, you know, I was excited to see Thales, and I know we can't consider that, but when the applicant, one of the speakers is from the school, I've got to believe as this goes through the process, a condition could be made so that we're not being sold on it being one school, and then it can be bought out and something else. So, I don't know how that can happen legally or anything else, but that's, to me, that's a concern that can be overcome. I am disappointed, because I thought I heard that this would be like a Del Webb, I'm using the word Del Webb, but a more senior-living, added houses, which then would kind of, almost counterintuitive, it wouldn't apply, it wouldn't be the one, the place that would be bringing students, but it wouldn't be contributing to the traffic at peak hours, you know, it would be a more dispersed traffic. So, if there's any plans for that housing, knowing our concern about keeping basically the whole thing for public purpose, you might want to think about how you're going to convey that in your application. I enjoyed the young man reading his script, I applaud him for coming, I hope that he continues to stay active in government. But I am going to be a Grinch here and say, "Don't play in the streets. Streets are not designed to play." And just because you bought in a community that didn't have growth around it, and you use it as a playground and put, we actually have ordinances that you don't put up basketball courts and things like that on public streets. There's a reason for that. They're designed for cars, and they're designed for mobility, and they're not designed for play. So, you know, when my daughter was five years old, she got hit by a car outside our house. So, if I sound passionate like you do, that isn't where you play, and I'm sorry if that offends your parents. The new laws, we're just going to have to deal with that, as Mr. France said. Talk to your legislators. At this point, the whole idea of it being all public purpose is paramount in my mind, at the same time, the evolution out there and what has changed. I would like, in the ideal world, I'd like to see it more than the Thales Academy, but I was really impressed reading about the amount of stacking space and all of that. So, I don't think, you know, let's not yell fire where it's not needed. These schools are wonderful, they make good neighbors, all you have to do is talk to the people in Holly Springs and Apex and in Raleigh. You know, I don't want to give up on this plan, but it's definitely in the needs improvement and needs work for mine. You've heard the comments of my peers on this, you know, there's a part of me that said, "Should, if we're so adamant about it, should it go forward?" But I think the right is, it has to, has to go to P and Z, and it has to go forward. And we'll deal with the traffic mitigation along the way. But I am concerned, as Mr. George said, and Ms. Robinson said, about the homes, and that's really, I really thought that was a good point you made, Mr. George, that this is really a rezoning for homes. You know, it's not really the schools, even though all the effort seems to be around putting those conditions in. So, I'm going to watch closely a little bit more about these homes and all of that, and still want to be convinced that the swap is the right thing, even though I was pretty, I really found Mr. Bowles' comments from Thales reasonable. So, tried not to be redundant, but those are my thoughts on it.
Any other comments?
Well, since I just asked questions before, I'll just make some comments that haven't been made already, which is a really short list. Yeah, well, I just wanted to reiterate that our goal has always been, is there a compelling reason to approve this, right? That's always been our goal, sitting at this table. And right now, I'm not a big fan... And right now, I'm not a big fan of what's currently zoned. It's a much bigger school, it's a, you know, I actually believe that the homes along the American Tobacco Trail are better than a school along the American Tobacco Trail. I just think that that's a more palatable, especially for the people who use the American Tobacco Trail. There are some things I do like about this. I mean, I'm not saying I'm a huge fan, but I think it's, as you mentioned, I think it's better than what we have. Is it all the way there? As you said, no. I think there are some things that could certainly be done. I would like to see more green space added to it, but I, at the same point, I do understand a lot of private schools, like Triangle Science and Math, even St. Mike's until recently, didn't have, didn't have green space, didn't have any place for the kids to play. So, that's an opportunity. Our point of being at this table is to give some feedback, so that when the developer goes back to talk to the neighbors, that they have some ideas, and obviously, these are just some ideas. I also would like to see some pedestrian improvements. We don't, we're not going to require you of them, we, obviously, with some of where we are with legislation, talking about traffic, we're not talking about that, I'm talking about pedestrian improvements can certainly be made, right?
Sidewalks are included.
Sidewalks are included, but even sidewalks internally, additional improvements can be made throughout this whole zoning. I also think that before we consider, and when it comes back to us, we as a council have to decide what traffic improvements will need to be made for us to feel comfortable with it, and if, that's on us, right? But I would not feel comfortable approving it and then just leaving it there without the rest of council talking about what we have to do to make it a safe place. So, just, you know, putting that out on the table as well.
I mean, I think that's a given. We know that if this develops as a school, whether it was a twenty-two-hundred-seat school or a thirteen-hundred-seat, it's going to need traffic improvements, and we are going to be the ones that have to make them, that's a given.
Exactly, and I, I'm saying that out loud so that any of the residents who are sitting there thinking, "Well, you're not going to improve it for us," no, that would not be the case.
And that's not what Cary does. I mean, it's literally not what we do. I mean, we're widening Reedy Creek Road right now with roundabouts and sidewalks and everything to better improve the traffic situation and promote pedestrian safety right in front of Reedy. It's the Cary way, it's what we do. So, it stinks Cary citizens have to pay for it, but, you know, yay legislature.
Makes our community safer. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, you gave us a lot of passionate comments, and you heard a lot of passionate feedback. Some of the Weldon Ridge residents are very familiar with our process. For those that are not, I can tell you where we're going from here. So, this goes to our Planning and Zoning Board, it's an advisory board of citizens, they're going to review the proposal, and they'll make a recommendation to us. It's possible that the applicant will make changes between now and then, so they might be reviewing something different than we reviewed tonight, or we saw tonight. Then, there's also a chance that it will change after the Planning and Zoning Board, after they make their recommendation before it comes back to us. Those changes slow the process down. With no changes, we're likely to see this in two or three months. With changes, it'll take longer. I'm looking at Ms. Dry, and she's shaking her head yes. And so, that's the process that's going on. Ms. Dry is the contact for questions, and she can be found on the town's website, maybe?
Yes.
If not, you can contact me, and I'll put you in touch with her. But we really appreciate the feedback, keep involved in the process, let's see what we can do with this process. We can, you know, work on it, it might get better, it might not, we might say no in the end, we might say yes in the end, we don't know. But don't give up on the process yet, keep working through the process, and thank you all for being here. That's it for our public hearings. We now move to discussion items, and our first discussion item is the consideration of fiscal year 2019 sidewalk priority list funding, and transportation planning engineer, Lana Deans. You're new for us, have we seen you before?
I have been here before.
Uh-oh, I forgot.
Here last year, talking about sidewalks.
Sorry about that.
And I've had a few items on the discussion, or on consent, too, so...
I did, I appreciate it.
Good evening, council, tonight I'm here to discuss the priority list, however, I know you've had a very long meeting tonight, so I'm just going to briefly go over the list of recommended projects. Collins Road, Byram Street, Northwest Maynard Road, Old Apex Road, Louis Stevens Drive for design and right-of-way, and staff recommends council approve the sidewalk projects outlined in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
The question I have, and I think I know the answer, is, your sidewalk recommendations are based on criteria?
That's correct. So, the criteria was adopted by council, I believe in 2002, if I'm remembering correctly, but yes, we follow the criteria every year.
And you're given a budget, and the budget and the criteria determine the list of sidewalks.
Exact, exactly, we rank them every year, we ranked thirty-three projects this year, and so these are the top projects.
And so, for people like me, who don't want to muck with the criteria and the budget, it's a no-brainer, so. You just approved what the criteria came up with, so that's where I am. I'll let my colleagues speak and ask questions, and then...
I agree with the mayor's comments regarding keeping this an apolitical process, I think it has served the town well over the years, and I am so thrilled to see a sidewalk going in on Byram Street, as well as Old Apex Road to the Town Station Apartments, as we try to make downtown more walkable and safe for kids going to Cary Elementary, this is awesome. Thank you, you guys are great.
Other comments or motion?
Well, I'll just thank you for Collins Road and Louis Stevens Drive. Let us both thank, let us...
Very apolitical.
Yeah, but thank you, magic study.
Yeah, and for the, not goat path, but the user-designed path that's in front of Davis Drive.
Yes, the well-worn path.
Yeah, well-worn, thank you, well-worn path, that principal will be thrilled, because I spoke with him about it several times, so thank you for putting that on the list as well.
That's the policy they adopted at NC State, where they decided to put bricks wherever the grass was beaten down.
It's called user-designed.
Yes, absolutely, it works.
They did that in Boston, too, back in the sixteen hundreds, but...
It worked.
Are we ready for a motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Our second item, the Weldon PDD Amendment, was tabled at the beginning of the meeting.
Yay.
We have no closed session, and so, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? We adjourn, thank you.[1714.41]